All right, looks like Jamie's back on, I think.
I am, yep, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, I'm gonna call the Monday, July 26, 2021, City of Dexter City Council meeting, regular meeting to order. And if everybody would join me by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it. Alex, are you ready to lead us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Stand if you choose.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alex. Ms. Jones, if you would please call her all.
Okay, and as is the past, please state where you are attending from city or county or township or whatever. So we'll start with Councilmember Arab.
Yes, present remotely from city of Dexter.
Councilmember Cousins?
I don't see him.
I did not see him either on the list originally. Okay, Councilmember Fisher.
Hi, I'm here remotely from Alma, the city of Alma, Michigan.
Councilmember Griffin.
Present remotely from the city of Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present, attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Councilmember Michelle.
Present, city of Dexter, USA, on a new phone that's partially set up, so if weird things happen, that's what's going on.
Love it. Welcome.
I don't.
I'm participating remotely from my aunt's lake house in Auburn, New York.
Okay. Student Rep Gilbert?
Present remotely from Webster Township.
And student Rep Erin.
Present remotely from Dexter, Michigan.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good evening, everyone. Item C on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our July 12, 2021, City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher. Thank you, Donna.
Oh, second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. Thank you, Jamie. Donna, any comments on the minutes?
Yeah, I just want to change one word, Carol, in what, in my council comments. And I tried to figure out how to dial that far down. What it was, was that the intent was that Marie is either working on it, or it's already done. So you can change it however you need to, but a word or two would make it more.
Okay.
Okay, makes sense?
Got it.
All right, whatever you put, I'm good with that now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Griffin, any comments?
Yeah, just a couple. On page two, under Ms. Olmstead's summary. The first bullet, 29 business, and Dexter should be 29 businesses. And then I also have a couple of comments on my council comment on page six. So, talking about, in the second line, let it be known that there have been no cases against their ethics board. I would change against to before, before, or before, or brought in front of. And then in the last line, some members on council have placed in me, changed place to placed with the D at the end. That's everything I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Cousins.
Welcome, everyone. I'm a little late.
You're okay. You're okay. Let the record reflect that Paul is here, starting on item C.
All right, I can say that I'm here reporting from the city of Dexter.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from council members? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes with those few changes, please.
Okay. Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes, the meeting minutes are approved. Thank you. We have no prearranged participation under item D tonight, so we're down to item E, approval of the agenda. Please remember, if there's something you need to declare as anything that's a conflict or potential conflict, now's the opportunity, or at least one of the opportunities. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Donna. Moved by Fisher.
Oh, second.
Second by Griffin. Thank you, Jamie. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Conflicts?
Oh, conflicts. I'm sorry, Zach, go ahead.
Yep, under the consent agenda, my employer is one of the folks receiving money, so I'll abstain. And just wanted to, members of the public, we did receive a note from, I can't find his name here. It's in the packet later on.
Yeah, for Doug Weber related to the small cell ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Okay. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dozens?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Rab?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Item F tonight is a public hearing that we have, or an amendment to our general code of ordinances for small cell wireless infrastructure regulation. So I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:08 PM. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight specifically about the potential amendment to the general code of ordinances for small cell wireless infrastructure regulation? If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, or if you're calling in, dial star nine from your cellphone. I'm not seeing anyone. Justin, do you see anyone?
I'm seeing no hands.
Okay, so we will let the record reflect that there were no public comments offered under item F. Is there a motion to consider?
I'll move to adopt.
Do we have to close the hearing first before?
Oh, yeah, I suppose I should close publicly. Yep, my fault. We'll close that at 6:09. Thank you. All right, and then Zach has a motion to adopt?
Yep, I'm gonna find the page number it starts on. The ordinance, starting on page 25 of our packet.
Okay, great. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Griffin. Thank you both. Okay, Michelle, I'll give you a chance to, your mic, a chance to talk to us about this a little bit.
Okey dokey. So you, you did see a draft at your last meeting, and it has been updated based on feedback from Doug Weber. I guess my question to you, counsel, and I'll direct it to you, Sean, as the chair. Do you want to discuss Mr. Weber's potential conflict of interest during the public hearing? Or do you want to wait until my report? Because some of what I'm going to talk about is feedback from him.
We just concluded the public hearing, so I'm happy to talk about it right now.
Okay, so give me two seconds. So in your packet, under my report, which starts on page 145, excuse me, I explained that Mr. Weber did inform me when he and I met, excuse me, after your last city council meeting, that he has worked in the past and still currently, if I'm not mistaken, with a company called Telecad. He does not work with, nor has he worked with Verizon. But Telecad is the engineering firm that Verizon Wireless is using. And, and that's who is going to be bringing in a, an application for a small cell facility. I asked Mr. Weber to provide in writing an explanation so that it could be shared with council. That also is in your packet on page 150. Mr. Weber has explained what his, his role is, was with Telecad. He does commit to providing the city with the services that we've contracted him for, as well as the additional work that he's provided for us with this draft ordinance. As I've explained, as I've stated, Doug was recommended to us by Steve Esty, our city attorney. And based on the interaction that I've had with Doug since we started this prior to COVID, I'm, I'm, I trust his, his judgment. I've seen him in action now, excuse me. We had a meeting last week with the telecom provider. And it's very, it's very clear to me, to staff, that he is responsible and his duty is to the city. Mr. Weber is here this evening, and he is participating in the meeting. If there's anything that you have a question for him or for me, we're both ready to be able to address them.
Michelle, it doesn't sound like to me he's worked on anything for Telecad in Michigan.
Correct. I've asked him to unmute, but he's there if you'd like to ask him to respond directly, Sean.
No, that's okay. Your answer is good. Jamie, question? And then Zach?
Yeah, so this ordinance, though, it is not specific to the project, correct?
No, it's not specific to this project, but if it's adopted, it would become effective upon publication, and if they have not, if any telecom provider hasn't yet put in the application in, before it becomes effective, this ordinance will be, will be used with those, with any applications that come in, including the one that we know is coming from Verizon.
Right. Was Mr. Weber's consultation on a potential draft ordinance a known, like, scope, in the scope before the applicant became known?
It was part of the, the contracted services, but later on in the process.
Right.
There was, there was going to be education leading up to it, design standards, things like that, and then it would have been part of it. This just comes out of order because of the urgency now.
Right. I mean, I'm curious to know what other people think. I don't, I don't see that providing guidance on updates to our general code of ordinances as being specific to any project. So if he were to be asked to provide information about a specific project, it seems to me that I would rather he not be commenting in that specific project. This is an amendment to the general code of ordinances that would apply to any and all small cell wireless infrastructure, potential permits, I think, so unless I'm missing something. I mean, yes, definitely, if there were some specific question that was related to the specific project, I would rather he not comment on that. This is the general coordinate of ordinances, and I suppose even if something beneficial to that company is being written into the ordinance, I suppose, wouldn't it also be available then to any other provider?
In the way you've asked that question, yes, it would, it would be an equal opportunity benefit.
Right. So I guess those are the thoughts I've had so far, but I'm open to other thoughts and information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Michelle?
My question was basically that this applies equally to all telecom folks regardless of the colors on their, their advertisements.
Yes, sir.
And much of it, though not all of it, is promulgated to us by state act.
Absolutely, yes.
Lot of variation in what we did. There's some, some tweaking here and there. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zach.
Thanks, Zach.
I want to say this new phone has stereo speakers on it. It's really trippy. It's like everyone's here on my desk.
That's scary.
Okay, well, thank you for, we can get over that little hurdle, and let me now continue for you. What you see in your packet today is the same ordinance, but with some, some minor tweaks for effectiveness. They were the input of Mr. Weber. Excuse me, and anything that is changed in this ordinance is, you'll see strike through and then, excuse me, underline. Excuse me, and pardon me, I've got a there's multiple papers. I'm shuffling here and trying to make sure I keep all of this together. Here we go. So there's some additional definitions that were added. There was some tweaking to the title and purpose to make it more specific for, for what this is regulating. The wireless communications facilities, not just in the public right of way, but also in public spaces. There were some tweaking to the word colocation as far as spelling, so that it was more, it was spelled the same way it is in the ordinance, or the act, I should say. The rates that the state act allows you to charge, or municipalities charge, there are annual rates for the, for equipment being in the right of way, whether it's on a pole, or whether it's a new pole. And there's a 10% increase every five years, unless the action changed, so that language has been put in. Excuse me. We've added a, we've taken out the sections regarding preference because it's counterproductive to the reason that this whole act exists to begin with. The small cells, and I think you'll remember this from other discussions for the, the members that have been on here before, and it will be new information for our new members. Small cells have to have, they have to be able to talk to one another. Excuse me. And so they're going to be mostly around 40 feet above the ground, and there's going to be more of them than you see big cell towers, because they have a bigger, wider range. Initially, the standards that were provided for you in draft dealt with areas within the city that already have overhead wires and poles. And so regulating that per the state act was very straightforward. But then we recognize that there are areas in the city that don't have poles, like our newer residential subdivisions. And so we have some language in there to deal with those types of situations. Because what you don't want is all of a sudden, any kind of pole going in, in multiple places. So we're trying to deal with this, excuse me, in a way that will make it palatable and still be within the confined or structure of the state law. But as I was saying, the preferences have been taken out, because if the, if these, these small cells, by their very nature, need to be able to be within distances to be able to communicate with one another in order to be able to provide the level of service that, that the public using it needs, identifying areas where you want them to be, it doesn't work very well. So if you need, if the company needs small cells in a downtown in order to provide the level of service that's needed there, it doesn't do any good to say, we have a preference that you put your small cells in the industrial part. I hope that makes sense to you all. Excuse me. So the language that's already there works with the, with the statute, but it still provides the, the little bit of teeth that we need to work with a small, with a small cell provider so that any new poles going in can look like what we already have. They may not, they're going to be taller, but they could be green. Maybe they'll be fluted. But they'll do a better job of blending in than just a wood pole or some heavy duty industrialized metal. And that's ultimately what I believe the city of Dexter's goal should be, is to maintain that continuity.
Hey, Michelle, this is Doug.
Yes, please.
Could I just add, I think what it does is it gives the city some more discretion to be able to make sure the small cell facility blends in with the zoning district in which it's in. A good example is the one, Michelle, you're dealing with right now downtown, that you've already discussed with the applicant, that you're going to want them to put it on a pole that blends in with your existing flooded light poles throughout the downtown area. And that's one thing the act, the state statute gives the city some leeway to do is to address aesthetic issues. They don't give you much leeway on the, on the fees, unfortunately, which is where I think they needed to also address, but that's another discussion for another day. But they do give the city's latitude, I believe, on some of the aesthetic issues, and I think that's what this, what your ordinance in front of you allows you to do, and rather than, rather than be stuck with a preference, like was in the previous draft ordinance, I think this gives you the more discretion to really consider the circumstances around the location where the small cell facility is going. Hope that makes sense.
Thank you. You came up with the word that I was struggling to recall, which was discretion.
Okay.
All through the ordinance, excuse me, we've really tightened that. We've tightened the ability to determine how to regulate. And it's, it's, it's the discretion. There is a large section that was taken out. Those are the things that aren't considered, considered permitted uses by the act as it pertains to small cells, both inside and outside the right of way. Those are the things that can be done under zoning per the act. And so that will be something that will, I will be taking to the planning commission and dealing with, through a zoning ordinance amendment. That does not have the same urgency, because the, really, the last thing that the small cell providers want to do at this point is to be negotiating leases with private property owners. So that section, that's why that section's taken out. On page, page 16 of your packet, page page 32 of the resolution. There's going, there, I'm proposing a very small change to that language, and it has to deal with the pass-through escrow. I'm happy to share the screen with you so that you can see what it looks like. Can you see that?
Yes.
It's minor, but it makes it clearer what it is that city is charging, why it's charging, and that the unused balance of the escrow will be returned when the project permitting is complete. Everything else, like I said, it's, it's just minor things to tighten up our ability to regulate per the act. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if there's something I cannot, that's more technical, Doug is, will be happy to be able to answer that for you.
Mr. Michelle's?
Yep, my first question, was there something magical about the $3,000 from the state, or is it just?
So the 3,000, Zach, isn't from the state, if we're talking about the pass-through.
Yep.
We charge $3,000 when somebody submits an application that has to go to planning, engineering, or through, for attorney reviews. And so I'm using that same language. The act does not prevent it. It also doesn't specifically provide it. Not everybody uses pass-through, and that might be why. But this way, everything is upfront and above board, and we, we cover all of our costs.
I would say then I would amend my motion to include that change and two other minor ones throughout the ordinance where it says city, city should be capitalized. Because we're a proper noun, and same thing for ordinance when it refers to this ordinance. There are some places where it does both, but not consistently throughout.
Okay.
I'm good.
So the amendment is to capitalize city and ordinance?
Yep, and the changes for this pass-through escrow.
Thank you very much.
Other, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. I wanted to substantive questions, I think, so on page 16, I think just above that new edit, where the rates, the rates will increase by 10% every five years, I think, for the permit application, and then somewhere else that's mentioned. I was just curious how the 10% was determined.
That's in the act.
That's in the act.
Specific language right in the act.
Let me make sure what was on this next page. Can you describe on page 23 of the packet, or the first point of section 50-141, bonding? The wireless provider, right, $1,000 bond per site. What does that mean?
So, excuse me, whenever somebody works in the right of way, we collect a bond to ensure that any damage can be repaired. Usually, usually, our requirement is 50% of whatever the cost of construction is. We, we don't, municipalities weren't given the discretion to determine that amount, the $1,000 is set by the act.
And so is that something we hang on to for the life of their use of the infrastructure?
No, just we hang on to it until they have mitigated any damage or disturbance in the right of way in which they worked. If they've damaged anything more than $1,000 and they don't, and they don't mitigate that damage, there is, the act does allow us, and our new ordinance does, to inform them and require, request that they make that those, those repairs. If they don't, we can make the repairs and invoice them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. On page 25, so in the actual ordinance, our charter, section 805 of our charter says that the enacting clause of ordinances shall be the city of Dexter hereby ordains.
Okay.
I don't know. That's something we can start doing. If Zach is amenable to that.
Yeah, so instead of the city of Dexter ordains, city of Dexter hereby ordains.
Right.
Yep, if that's what our charter says we're supposed to.
Yeah. And then I have, I know this is a long document, and I know it was put together in short order, and so I appreciate all of that. There were some more grammatical edits or formatting type things. I'm happy to go through them. I don't know, more broadly speaking, what the process is for internal editing of documents, if somebody is like a point person to do that, or if it's just a person who creates a document.
But I can tell you what we do with the zoning ordinance, when they're, when they're grammatical or formatting minor errors to be fixed. And they don't change the regulation in any substantive way. I just have you send them to me, and then I make those corrections. Or I have the planning commissioner send it to me, and I make those corrections, if I don't know about them beforehand.
Right. I can characterize a couple of them, so I noted there were extra spaces and a couple of spots that's easily fixed with a find and replace, looking for extra spaces. Sometimes I also noticed the font color seems to The font color seems to change and it goes from like a light gray to a black. I don't know why that happened.
That, yep, we can fix that. It it won't be a man, it's not significant, so we can do that.
Right. Um, on page fourteen and the new added section E. One, two, three, four, in the fifth line where it says building materials and the like with the district in question. I think the with should be within the district in question. So taking into account such things within the district in question.
Um, which which letter, oh, E?
E. So.
Okay.
City reserves a right to require construction replacement, something that's aesthetically compatible to the district in which it is located, taking into account X and the like within the district in question. The with should be within.
Got it.
Uh, okay, that's my comment about colors. I think on page seventeen for A for under pre-meeting prior to submission of an application, the city or a wireless provider may request to pre-application meeting to discuss that two. And that second line should be A, I'm thinking.
Yep.
Request a application. And I thought E, if you just scroll down on that same page under final approval, that part read a little strange to me in the second sentence. If the city council is satisfied that all the requirements of this article are satisfied, it shall approve the application. I didn't know if.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be administrative. Um, that's an error on my part. It should be city manager.
Okay.
Hang on just a second, let me make sure I'm I'm.
Yeah, I think I just meant like the phrase, if the city council is satisfied, it seemed to me that that was sort of vague. And so I didn't know, like, what does it mean for the city council to be satisfied it shall approve? Um, some, I don't, I mean, I guess this is language that came to us, so maybe it's not something we change, but and I guess there's an opportunity. It's just saying we shall approve it if we're satisfied. I guess I don't know how many people need to be satisfied, like, does it have to be the whole council? Is this still something that's up to a majority?
It's a majority rule.
Well.
Yes, it's majority and yes, my mistake. The, I'm sorry for the um, confusion. Staff will review, it'll come to council, it'll be presented. Um, and if it meets all of the requirements for the act, it has to be approved.
Okay.
Okay, that's why it says shall, but you still have to be satisfied.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, Michelle, Michelle, might I add, it's a, maybe this reads a little better. If the if the city council is satisfied that all the requirements of this article have been met, it shall approve the application. Is that, is that instead of saying satisfied twice?
Or if the city council, I I mean, can you say if the city council agrees by majority vote? That all requirements, I mean, but then you'd have to have two votes, I guess. So maybe I'm just making it more complicated.
Think the fancy way would be if city council finds or makes a finding that may be more fancy than necessary, though.
Does that require a vote?
Yeah.
Finding?
As part of the overall motion, I don't know that it requires two separate votes unless you want it. Would you agree, Zach, or or no?
Yeah, it can be all together.
Yeah, I don't know if we change it then, if the city council finds that all the requirements of this article have been met, it shall approve the application. That reads clear to me.
Okay, I've got that down.
Okay. On page, I think there's a few more, on page twelve, under number five, the second to last line, the last word applicants, I think we need a possessive there.
I'm sorry, you said section twelve.
No, I'm sorry, page twelve.
Mm hmm.
Number five, alternate citing. We need an apostrophe, I think, within between the T and S on the word applicant and the third line there by the city within seventy-five feet of the applicant's proposed location.
Okay, please say that again, Jamie.
That's fine. Are you under alternate citing?
Yep.
Yeah, so then upon receipt, go into the second line, then the third line. Property or structures owned or controlled by the city within seventy-five feet of the applicant's proposed location. So applicant's proposed location, that applicant needs an apostrophe. Because that's the, so I think between the T and the S. Scroll it down just a little bit on that same page under number two for rate. The one, two, three, fourth line down where you have that added text right after where you added 10% and B rounded.
Okay, this, it just comes right, it's the language right out of the app, Jamie, I didn't change it.
Okay, then I'm fine with that. And I asked that question and that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for providing those. Are there other council members with count with comments on this article? Okay, we have a motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Um, amended to include the language on the escrow that we that Michelle shared earlier, as well as the punctuation comments that Jamie provided. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the uh, ordinance.
Okay. Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
It, Aram?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Mr. Weber.
Thank you.
Item G is non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? If so, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address if you're interested. Justin, I am not seeing anybody with their hand up.
Yep, I'm currently seeing no hands.
Okay, move on to item H. There were a couple of communications in the packet, uh, one, our upcoming meeting list, and then some documents provided by Chief Smith. Any council comments or questions on the communications? Jamie, is your hand still up or was it put up?
No, I I re-raised it.
Okay, I'm calling on you that, please.
Yeah, I'll I'll start with a meeting list first until we resolve that, and then I'll have other comments for the next part. So the zoning, the ZBA meeting, that's tomorrow night, I'm pretty sure that's at 6:00 PM. If Mike wants to confirm that or not, or.
That's correct.
Okay. So ZBA on seven twenty-seven is at 6:00 PM. And then I also noted that our city council meetings are are listed here at seven o'clock. I don't know if this is a time to have that conversation. I know we're going to be meeting about the organizational matters. I would just say that I, so currently we're meeting at six, so it seems like that calendar should list that. But if now would be a time to say, I'd be happy to meet at seven so that when, if and when you do need work sessions, we can have those at six for things like the organizational matters, work session, et cetera. Anyways, the most immediate thing I think is changing that to six. But if it's put there to open that conversation, I'm happy to have that conversation.
I I I did not intentionally include it. I think I, so I I keep a um, a total meeting list of of all the meetings through the end of the year. Um, you know, just copy and paste, you know, through through, you know, the end of the year. Um, and I think I I changed all of them through June to be six. Um, and then just missed um, this last round.
So then maybe at our our meeting, we can talk about the time, the time of year.
All right, well, for for now, the August ones are six o'clock. Since they'll be virtual. Any other comments on the meeting calendar? Okay, how about on communications from Chief Smith? Jamie, you had indicated you had some questions?
Yeah. Is Chief Smith on?
He is, I believe, yes.
Yes, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank him for that letter. I think many of the points that he made in that letter did resonate with me, and I could appreciate the perspective that he and the other firefighters are coming from. And I did reach out to him with some follow-up questions about the NFPA standard and evaluation form. And maybe there's still something I'm missing there, but essentially, I had. Let me see if I can get to that. What I think would be interesting for me to know is the extent to which which of the items in this assessment are perceived to be most critical in addressing. And again, I don't know how relevant that question is, given what is contained in these standards. But a response to that question would be informative to me if if it exists. I was also curious to know. Um, so essentially, I asked, what are the most concerning gaps between reality and these standards? And what areas would you seek to improve first and why? And then I also then had a follow-up question to say, how, if at all, would any of these ratings change with either a renovated facility at eighty-one forty Main Street or a new facility at Dexter and Arbor Road and Meadowview? Basically, I'm wondering, can these standards be used to create a quantitative benchmark or quantitative assessment that we might use to evaluate potential options as we're continuing this conversation? And I I did receive an email response where it seemed like that might not be a way that we could use these standards because it's uh, maybe they're for the entire area and not not just our particular station. So if other people are interested in a response to that, I would welcome his um, participation at this meeting. I don't, but anyway, so those were some thoughts I had about that communication.
So you got a written response from chief?
Yeah, and it was just this afternoon, so I think I would have to follow up with him because it sounds like maybe I'm not thinking about it correctly, that the way I would, I was thinking I might be able to use the information might not be appropriate. It's not entirely clear to me why not, so I'm happy to follow up with him individually. Or if other people have a similar question, we could all get that response now.
I I think we're going to continue our discussion at the next meeting, correct, Justin?
Correct.
So Jamie, if there's some points that you've got clarification from the chief on that you want to include, you know, maybe we could do that and.
Okay, I, yeah, I can follow up with him in more detail between now and then.
Just to make sure that you're getting what you want out there?
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Other comments from council?
I just say that I started reading this last week and I think I'm halfway through it right now. Just, that's a joke, it's, there's a lot to digest.
There's a lot, there's a lot there, Zach, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Okay, this is Paul, I have a question.
What, Paul?
We are under contract with DAFD to provide the station that is the main station in the city of Dexter, is that correct?
Uh, I think we're under contract to provide a cost for our share of the runs. And we also, if we choose to provide a station, if any community chooses to provide a station, then DAFD can choose to occupy and staff it.
Yeah, it it's a bit complex, I'll say it. The interlocal says that the main station shall be in the city. But it says that that the units shall make available for rent. Um, so it doesn't necessarily say that the DAFD has to accept the facility. And so it gets in an interesting logic trap of what if the DAFD doesn't want a facility that we're offering, but the main station still has to be here.
So the the present station has to be in the city of Dexter. And we have to provide a I would assume a safe, theoretically, a safe environment for the firefighters uh, to work in there, to stay in there, to sleep in there, to eat there, so forth and so on. Uh, is that a correct assumption?
I would think we would want all of our facilities to be safe, Paul.
No, just, I'm talking about one specifically, Sean, I'm talking about the fire station. We don't own the one in Webster, we don't have anything to do with the one in Dexter. So that's leaves only the one in this main part of the city, which we are under contract, I understand, has some responsibilities. We've used uh, our dollar tax dollars to upgrade it.
Who are you asking that question to?
Anybody, I'll take anybody, I'll take Justin, he's a, he's the uh, acting.
He's the interim city manager.
What's that?
He's the interim city manager.
Correct.
Yeah, all right, so are are you asking i- if we have spent dollars to make upgrades? I guess I'm I'm not, I'm not clear on on the question.
Oh, the answer that first, yes, are we? And do are we obligated to make those upgrades?
Uh, so so there is a list of of responsibilities in in the um, in the lease agreement um, with DAFD. And so we we are responsible for a certain set of things, and they're responsible for a certain set of things. Um, things such as like the external doors, um, the framing. Um, basically, the exterior stuff is ours and a majority of the internal stuff is theirs, not a majority, not not all. Um, as they relate to to personal property and equipment that they use for for their service.
Let's specifically talk about the sleeping quarters. Who's responsible for that?
Uh, in in terms of of the structure of the building, uh, that would be us. For everything else, it would be them.
Paul, if you have questions related to the contract, I would suggest that you get them to Justin so we can have him as part of the packet next time.
Well, it it uh, it was, it was, these questions are prompted by, it says the mayor asked how the firefighters feel about the current station conditions. And and or do they feel it's an unsafe working environment? You know?
Yep.
You asked that question last meeting.
Yeah, because I I did ask that question because I've not heard them, I've not heard them say that. In all of my interactions with them, I've not heard one firefighter say that, other than Chief Smith.
All right, I'll leave it go for now.
Ms. Griffin?
Yeah, thanks. As a follow-up, could we get a copy of that lease as part of the packet? I I don't have any immediate questions, but I don't know that I've ever seen it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Any other questions related to the communications? Okay, we'll move on to our first report tonight from our finance director, treasurer, assessor, Marie. Good evening.
Hello, council, hope you're all doing well tonight. Um, you have my report in the packet. I wanted to update a couple of things on it before I go to questions. Um, under the July, the twenty twenty-one July Board of Review, it was held. Uh, they did approve all of the petitions, but I did want to let you know that we had a veteran's exemption that was added to the agenda on the day of the meeting. And also the um, on the hardship application, they did approve it using the new standards of the twenty-five, fifty, a hundred percent. Um, and they gave him, I want to say a 50% reduction, going off the top of my head. Um, so that's one. On the tax tribunal cases, Dexter shops, we dismissed that case. Or while they actually stipulated to dismiss that case after we went back to them with our appraisers um, information, so that has been dismissed. And then on eighty-four forty Park Ridge for the twenty twenty-one tax year, I have a question out to the attorney. I believe we can only raise the taxable value by the rate of inflation. So we could go and fight the state equalized value, but I believe we're locked in on the taxable value. I don't think we have a choice there. So there's not really a whole lot of, you know, reason to put a whole lot of effort into it if that's if that's the case. Um, so I wanted to tell you about those few things. And then I have a couple minor things to talk about, but go ahead and ask if anybody has any questions first.
Ms. Griffin?
Thanks. Hi, Marie. Just back to the eighty four forty thing, I think, just because it's an example, so I can make sure I'm understanding how this process works generally in terms of the assessments. So I, so you mentioned an appraisal using a sales approach and then the board of review having a value based on a cost approach. Are you able to describe those two processes? And when we choose among them or how we choose among them or how that informs what we're doing here?
Okay, so most appraisals or most assessing is done on a mass appraisal basis. So what we do is we use the state's manual and we cost out the value of a house based on what the state thinks is important. And then those, that cost is then adjusted to meet the market of the city and the county. There's some multipliers that are added or subtracted. So that's kind of how, that's how your basic assessing is done. But when you go to tax tribunal, usually what happens is a sales or a market value is created and that, that's the same way. Like when you get a value on your house for a mortgage, it's the same kind of process for that. So in this particular instance, I actually learned something that I didn't know. Um, they, I could have used the cost, I could have used the cost method to defend our value from the board of review. Um, but I unfortunately did not include the valuation statement. So the judge kind of dismissed that. Um, that method and just went with the sales approach on it. Does that make any sense?
A bit. So I guess I'm concerned or confused how the tax tribunal was able to come up with a number that was so much lower than either of our numbers. And I'm wondering, is that something that's unique to that property? Or is there some systemic issue that across the board, if every resident here were to go to tax tribunal, they would come up with a value much lower than what we've actually come up with?
Yes. So in this particular instance, there is both something unique to this property and there is something slightly systemic. The, you know how I did, I did Dexter Crossings last year to make, you know, to bring everything correct. Well, Westridge Dexter Crossings had a classic construction for almost all of their properties in there that I felt was too high. Westridge has the other problem. So when you bring in a new property like this into, um, how do I explain this? So when you do the sales study in this neighborhood of Westridge, because the classic constructions are generally held lower, your ECF, which is what adjusts, it's the multiplier that adjusts for the sales, is higher maybe than it would be if the classic construction was done correctly. So when you have this new property, I put it in there at the classic construction that it should be at. And it kind of got a double whammy, if that makes any sense. The other problem with this particular parcel is that the homeowner did not let me inspect the house. So I had to go off the plans. And they came to board review and argued that some of their interior stuff was not necessarily as high of, of as good a materials as was indicated in the plans. And so the board of review took that into consideration and actually lowered their value. I can't remember by how much, but it was a good chunk. And I was involved in all of this with them because I explained to them the difficulties of this particular property because of what I just told you. So then they appealed to the tax tribunal. Their appraiser low balled, I mean, big time low balled. Um, I was able to shoot some holes in his appraisals just because there was inaccuracies. He did some adjustments, for instance, that weren't even in the house, you know, so there was just errors. So he low balled. When I did mine, it came in lower than what the board of review had said. And I think in some aspects, that's because really there's too much house for what is common in that neighborhood. I mean, it's the largest house in the neighborhood. It has special features that a lot of the neighbors don't have. So I think that what we came in, which was like the five, the five hundred and forty was probably pretty accurate to what you would get in that neighborhood. I think if you put that house in the township, you would get a lot higher, but because it's in that neighborhood, that's what you got. So basically what the judge did is they looked at all of my comps, they looked at all of their comps. They picked the one that we both chose as a comp and went right up the middle.
Okay. Okay. So it sounds like there is enough that's unique to this property that we shouldn't necessarily be worried that this is happening everywhere.
If it was happening everywhere, we would get a lot of residential. Um, you know, people filing to the tax tribunal. The deadline for this year is August second, and there hasn't been any filings with the exception of eighty four forty that the judge told them they had to file.
Thank you.
Marie, that's still a considerably higher taxable value than most of the other homes in that suburb.
Yes, yeah. That's, you know, Westridge is kind of a tale of two developments because the older homes tend to be in the three hundred ranges and the newer homes tend to be in the four to five. So well, three to four. There's one model in there that goes for like four thirty.
Wow, I see your hands up next.
And this is just sort of related to that. I mean, was this twenty twenty, is that the second tax year of this house? I mean, this house was just built too. So that's part of it, right?
It was the first year that it was constructed.
Okay, so that's got to be part of it.
It is, because I mean, you don't have anything to compare it to, really.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to speak to this not being like necessarily like what's going to happen everywhere.
Right. And because this house was unique.
Yeah. Thanks.
Michelle?
A little information. Excuse me. And it piggybacks off with what Marie said. Westridge is unique. The vacant parcels in Westridge have gone for as high as a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a vacant parcel. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, the last, the last vacant parcels that sold in the old village sold, excuse me, for between eighty and ninety thousand. But what I'm noticing and what I'm hearing from realtors through questions and comments, they're looking at those prices in Westridge to start dictating prices for vacant parcels elsewhere in the city. Pardon me.
Thanks, Michelle.
Have an impact on Marie's ability to tax things. But it is the interesting dichotomy between market supply and demand and how they set prices versus how how Marie can tax a property.
Thank you. Any other questions, Marie? The floor is still yours under your report.
Yeah, I have two other things to add.
Your email.
That I did not include in the report and they're more of the kind of professional, private or personal side of my job. Two things. Um, as council may be aware, I was going for the Mass, Michigan Master Assessor designation. Um, part of that is because I felt that I was, my weak spot was commercial and industrial. So this certification has three sections to it. The first section was six months of classwork in the various, well, just six months of classwork. And then the second section is writing a demonstration appraisal. And then the third section is an examination. So as part of the process, when you're in your classroom sessions, you're supposed to have the property that you are going to do your demonstration report kind of chosen when you go into there. And you find this out, they don't tell you this, but you kind of find it out like on your own. So my first property that I chose was actually in the township I live in. And by the second class, one of the instructors says, you know, that you don't want to use this one because it's going to be too difficult. So then I chose another one that was in the city of Dexter and I thought, okay, this is great. And like two weeks before the classroom sessions ended, they took it down. It was the old Jazzercise on Dexter and Arbor. Yes. So I picked another one. I actually picked, um, elastisol. They were very, very cooperative with me and I really appreciated their cooperation. And I got all the way to, I got through the first part of the panel where you tell them what your property is. They say, yeah, okay, this is reasonable. I got all the way to the first draft and found out that all of my comps were incorrect because elastisol is a non-conforming because the lot size, they don't conform to their lot size. So at this point with like a month left to, maybe a month and a half left to write this demonstration report. And this demonstration report is a monster. I was basically back at square one, having to start over again. So Dexter does not need a master assessor. I don't need a master assessor. I learned what I needed to learn. And quite frankly, I have other things to do. So I did withdraw from the program. When I withdrew from the program, it's kind of funny because the guy at the state that's in charge of the program, he told me it took him five tries to get through.
Oh, wow.
So it's just, this is the way the certification is. So I did, I did want to let council know that I withdrew from that. But I did learn, I learned a lot. I learned an awful lot. So it was worth the experience, even though it was slightly frustrating at times. And then the other one is I have a designation from the Michigan Municipal Wax, it's from the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada called Certified Public Finance Administrator. And I've held this certification since like two thousand and six. And there is a continuing education component. It's a combination of education and experience. But they do have an advanced level of this. And in order to get the advanced level of this, you have to give back to the association's mission, either by being a board member or committee members or part of giving educational sessions and that sort of thing. And I was able to qualify for that designation by like two points over what was needed because of, mostly because of the training sessions that I've given at conferences. So I'm pretty proud of that. So I didn't put it in the report, but I did want to let council know that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Other questions for Marie? Thank you, Marie. Up next is our public services superintendent. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, council. Good evening, everybody. I have a two week report for you. I don't have a lot of updates, but I would like any questions if you have any on my two week report.
Any questions for Dan? Dan, I see that the twisted fish is back up.
Yes. Yes, yes. I heard about that this morning from Kurt that they got it repaired finally and got it up and and spinning properly again. Very nice.
Well, so, 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 so I actually, I, I don't think it's spinning.
No.
It is back together and it has been reinstalled on its pole. But I think that they were having issues with balance and alignment so that they were able to, to correct it where it will still sit on the post, but because it's not, you know, perfectly balanced, it's not, it's not rotating. And actually, that was one item that I was going to bring up under, under my report too. We, we did get a quote from the original artist for a new twisted fish and installed, I think it was just under five thousand. Because the original twisted fish is no longer spinning and you know, due to vandalism, there is the potential to, to make a claim against our insurance. If, if we wanted to go the route of purchasing a new twisted fish sculpture that will rotate.
Sorry about that, council. I was not aware this fish wasn't spinning. I was aware it was up, but not all of that. Sorry about that.
If, if someone goes to one of our patio spaces long enough, it'll spin though.
That's what I was referring to.
So Justin, I take it you are going to pursue the insurance?
Or is that? There was, there was a conversation I wanted to have with, with council, whether council felt that it was, it was worthwhile to, to go that route.
Can you explain why it wouldn't be worthwhile? Is it high deductible or something or what's the?
There, I believe there is a thousand dollar deductible.
How much have we spent to get it fixed to its condition now?
So, so, so far, we haven't spent anything. I imagine probably a couple hundred dollars in, in costs to, to the person who made the attempts to, to try and fix it.
Well, I'm supportive of trying to get the insurance coverage money for it.
I am likewise, Sean.
Yep, I am too.
I would be fine with that.
Okay. So then the, the, the follow up question is, where do we want to locate the, the, the original twist division? And this is a conversation I can have with ours culture heritage committee and maybe they will want to come back with a recommendation.
I mean, the one that doesn't, doesn't spin now?
Correct.
Ask him if he'd like to take it back and reduce the price of the new one so he could use the material or something.
Yeah, I mean, Justin, I think the, whichever one that we can get that works, we know the location, we'd like the one to go to that works. Why don't we, you know, if there's an additional spot for something, have ACH make a recommendation?
Okay.
Other questions for Dan? Or Dan, any other updates to provide?
After the last council meeting, there was a little bit of discussion on the path, the new water border path we have. We've about mowing possibly the, the grass and flowers and stuff down. I've made calls to, you know, our Bobcat vendors to see if there's any attachments we can, we can use. We're getting quotes between nine and twelve thousand for an attachment. I called the county road commission and asked them about their machine that they have that has the arm that reaches out with a tractor that they go down the side of the roads with to see if they could, they came out and looked at it and said their equipment's too heavy to help us with that. We've also made a call to a company in Celine that maintains the medias around highways and different things. Their equipment's too big. We've reached out to a local farmer that has a sickle bar off of a little tractor. We haven't been able to have him on site to do a visual on that. So I'm kind of working through that to see and bring something back to council to see if that's what council would like to do here in the near future, working on that.
I do also have an update on, on that as well, Dan. Sorry. The, the, the yellow, the tall yellow flowering buds that we're talking about cutting, I reached out to Paul Evanoff with, with a picture of those. And apparently they are invasive. Oh. So he, he, he has some recommendations on, on how to eliminate them, but apparently they are of the mustard family of invasive species. And so it's something that we've worked to mostly eliminate from phase one. And it sounds like it's not, it's not too terrible to, to combat and can be combated on, on phase two.
Well, maybe, Justin, we can talk tomorrow then. Maybe I don't need to be spending all this time looking for some way to cut it then if there's another alternative on that.
Yeah. And I literally just heard from him, you know, an hour and a half ago.
Thank you for following up on it. Ms. Griffin?
Oh, they were growing so beautifully and prolifically so quickly.
Yeah, no wonder.
So I just wanted to ask Dan, because we've stopped and started the conversation about having like a drive in with you, a sit in with you, or the facilities, et cetera. I don't know if that's still on your radar or what the next steps are for that to happen. Are you waiting for us to reach out to you or what?
If you would like to set up some dates and, and some times, I don't know if you and Zach want to come at the same time, which is fine. Or individually, yes. If you guys want to set up some times and just let me know, I'm sure that I can figure out how to make that work.
And how much time do you think that would take? Like, should we have planned a set aside?
At least two hours, I'm thinking. Um at least two hours, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll coordinate something and then you can get back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Next up is our Community Development Manager Report. Michelle or Mike?
Hello, Council. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
Thank you.
Be good, thanks.
Okay, so um if we could, I just want to make sure I know um in regards to Mr. Weber, before I go into my updates. Um um are you satisfied that um that we can continue to use him in the capacity of helping with applications as well as the contractual work that he would be under, or do you only want him to do the contractual work? As he's outlined in the second page of the letter he sent.
Do you need him beyond the contractual work?
Um it's it's helpful to be able to um use him as a consultant on some of these reviews for things that until, at least until we get used to them. Um I know that I can go to the planners for planning things and I go to our engineers, but when it's a specific um something that's technologically um specific to small cell uh based on something that an applicant's propi- uh proposing or are countering with uh, we need this because it's very helpful to be able to go to them.
Okay. Ms. Griffin?
My, yeah, I think my preference, so earlier I was contemplating his contributions to the ordinance. I think regarding this language here, my preference is for the second one is that he would not be commenting on any matter that involves specifically telecad engineering. I I don't know how easy it is or how readily available other experts in this area are and if you've looked into that at all.
Um I have not looked for others. We originally went to the city manager, I'm sorry, not city manager, the city attorney Steve Esty for his help with with this particular um a- a- area of regulating, excuse me, and hi- his recommendation was for Mr. Weber and Mr. Weber's company. Um if I could just peel the onion a little bit, um Jamie, when you say not um specifically providing co- um comment on telecad, telecad's not the applicant. They're just the engineering firm. Um so it's going to, any comments from him would come through, would be given to staff to then provide to Verizon Wireless or whoever the provider is to fix their plans or revise them um in whatever way is needed to meet this new ordinance that's going into effect and ultimately uh by extension, the state law. Would, is that going to be a problem?
I mean, yeah, I don't know. I guess I'd be, yeah, curious to know what other people think. It's, I don't know if it seems convoluted to me, but like, is there a way that the advice he provides for a Verizon application, knowing that telecad is the engineering firm, that it could give some benefit to telecad engineering that would also be given to uh some other engineering firm? If it's the case that the recommendation is something that's directly going into the ordinance, then that's a benefit that would be shared by any engineering firm. But if it's a specific comment back to Verizon, knowing that telecad is the one installing it, that's where it seems like there's the perception of a conflict to me.
Could, um I'm gonna ask to unmute Doug in.
Um I guess my, first of all, let me let me state this. I don't, I don't know if you folks are aware. I I'm a licensed attorney also, so I'm I'm very conscious of uh perception of conflicts and what the what what conflicts exist, just as your city attorney Steve Estes. And I've worked with Steve for a long time. So I know he he and his firm are are very much aware of those types of things. I liken this to a conflict with a with an attorney and a the Estes firm is an example. They're a very large firm. Um there are abilities within the conflict rules to erect what they call a Chinese wall, which means that I I I would agree to not uh comment on things that involve telecad and stay recuse myself from those items. Other applications and stuff that come in. Um and okay, it just it it just happens to be luck of the draw that telecad came into an area where I was already under contract with somebody. Um telecad does work primarily for Verizon in this market. Um I wouldn't anticipate them coming in or anybody else uh on under this this type of project. And I and I've disclosed this this situation to them as well and 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 their their ownership is fine with it. They understand what the the issues are. Um I'm happy to recuse myself from the this application. Um but I I I, you know, I I'm confident that I can remain neutral on this and and remain uh allied with my duties to the city of Dexter and and what I've contracted with the city to do. Um I, as Michelle mentioned, I was at a meeting at site last week uh with the telecad folks along with Michelle. Um I I believe that I demonstrated in that meeting that I wasn't giving them any preferential treatment or anything of that nature. Um and like I said, the work that I do with them is is in other parts of the country. I'm doing work in North Carolina, Tennessee, Kentucky for them, for another wireless carrier. So um again, I'm 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 confident in my abilities to stay neutral from them. Uh but I'm I'm definitely going to accept whatever your preferences.
I appreciate that. Um so yeah, I guess I've sort of stated my thoughts. I'm happy to hear from other people.
Zach?
Uh I was gonna say, I I can see how there is the perception. I think the fact that we've talked about it, um brought it to sunlight is good. Um I do know that the legal profession has very complent, complex and stringent rules about how these types of interactions happen. And if they're violated, there there are pretty severe penalties. So I'm I'm comfortable continuing it. Um especially through short terms so that staff can get comfortable with these.
Thank you. Michelle, are you asking for us to vote on something?
Well, I am asking to know, excuse me, um I guess in some ways I do need a vote from you or a consensus.
What's what's your recommendation?
My recommendation was to continue to use him, like he said, and like I put in my report. Um he he has demonstrated to staff that um he's trustworthy. He did provide um um assistance at the meeting that um was beneficial to the city that um had he not brought that up um it wouldn't have been disastrous for the city, but it certainly did help in in um knowing what else to ask Verizon for.
All right, is there a motion then? Because this probably should have been on the agenda rather than in a report. If it's if it's something that requires this kind of action.
Um I apologize. With his letter on the sec- on page one fifty-three, he's identified um um two options uh for him to continue on or to only uh do the work that he's contracted for. And I just presumed, and it I can see where that is an error, that I could at least get consensus on one or the other. Um if you would prefer, we can do it on your next agenda.
Well, if there isn't a motion, then we're waiting until the next agenda. So I guess we're, do you have anything else under your report, Michelle?
I do have two updates for you. Excuse me. I'm going to share my screen again with you. So we received an email from a, whoops, I'm sorry. Can you see this? Um the stencil on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, so um my recollection is that at one time um we did have signage, um and maybe we still do have some signage. Um I I'm not recalling off the top of my head, that indicates that uh bicycling and um skateboards or roller skates on the sidewalks are aren't permitted. Um but my recollection is that we also don't enforce that. Um and so um instead of putting up more signs if we don't, if we already have them or putting up signs if we don't, um the suggestion was what if we put stencils down and even if we don't quote unquote enforce, which would take more sheriff um uh to do that, um what if we put these stencils down? Um and so if that's something that council would be in favor of, uh I can work with Justin and DPW to come back with some suggestions on locations, um sizes, et cetera. Um but I really would like some feedback from council as to how you'd like to handle um um bicycles and roller blades and skateboards on sidewalks in the downtown.
Is that what that third symbol is? I see the bicycle and the skateboard.
Right, bicycle, skateboard and roller blades or roller skates. And at some point, you may want to also include um scooters, since scooters are a a thing now.
Uh Ms. Griffin?
Yeah, uh runners, pedestrians, does it matter how fast you're moving on your feet or is a pedestrian just somebody who's using their feet to locomote?
Uh it's it's, yes, it's feet. So runners are not excluded from running on a sidewalk.
I'm fine with this.
Any other council members have want to weigh in on anything? Seems like a good solution.
Are you only talking about sidewalks in the city or are you talking about the trail as well?
Yeah, well, the trail you are allowed to ride a bike on. Um and you are allowed to roller blade. I'm not sure about the skateboard. I'm presuming that it could because the 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 uh the Mill Creek path and all of the trails connected to it are multimodal modal trails. This is specific through the downtown.
Yep, just in the downtown where the ordinance wouldn't otherwise apply and we'd have to put signs everywhere.
Okay. I hear more complaints about the trails and bicycles than anything else.
I do hear those too, Paul. That that the bicyclists are not very um what's the word? Yes, consider it, yes.
They go very fast and they don't always come up, you know, and slow down around people that are walking. Mm-hmm. And and they uh, you know, if you're walking and a bicyclist comes up behind you, unless they give you some kind of notification, you don't even know they're there most of the time because they're traveling so fast.
Yes, I have heard that too, Paul.
Well, we could, we could create specially signage that says bicyclists yield to pedestrians or please yield to pedestrians or something like that. If you want to get that message out better, but I mean, it is a non-motorized path for more than just walkers. Right. Jamie?
Yep, sorry, I just had one more follow-up. I'm not, it's not entirely clear to me what area this covers. I'm just thinking about like in front, like to me, this seems perfectly fine in front of like the businesses or the mixed-use downtown on Main Street. And you know, some of those other arterial streets, but you're getting into residential, single-family home or whatever and you've got like, it's it's not there. It is just okay.
It's just in the downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, unless there's any other comments on that, I'll go to the second one. Again, I'm going to share a screen.
Michelle's looking um for sure. We don't enforce downtown? I'm not that we don't enforce bicycles and skateboards and things on the sidewalk. That's true that we don't? Okay.
Um I remember it coming up. Oops, I'm sorry. I remember it coming up when Courtney was still here a number of years ago. Um because there was a um, there were some complaints and um I, you'll have to forgive me, I can't pinpoint the date or the year, but I do recall that it did come to council. There was a small discussion. And um enforcement was not um was not desired. Um it's 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 not something that code enforcement can do. Um and Justin, you might want to um weigh in on this. It wa- it does require um um the sheriff's office.
Is there an ordinance that says that you walk your bike or you walk your scooter, whatever?
I believe so.
I think so too.
Because you do have sign, you did at one point have signage.
Yeah, the the problem, Don, is we don't have it assigned enough for the sheriff to feel like they can enforce it because they can't point to something that says, don't ride your bike. And then so that the the question then becomes, well, how many signs is enough signs and how many signs do we want to put in the downtown?
I kind of remember the discussion.
For, you know, for that. So that's why this this pedestrian only, you know, no riding your bike is kind of a subtle hint if people see it.
Okay.
Yeah, and and typically when it comes to moving vehicles, um that's something that we would direct to the sheriff's office, you know, whether it's
Yeah.
bicyclists or motorized vehicles.
It just seems courtesy, a courtesy um to walk your bike or walk your whatever, I think. I don't know that we should have a zillion signs, but if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Um and I'm sorry, did somebody start to say something and I cut them off?
No, I said thank you as well.
Okay, thank you. Um there was some discussion about uh the Open Meetings Act and um um when we go to in-person meetings, and I believe that's starting in September if I'm not mistaken. And what were the, what are the parameters in which a a member of a public body um could participate remotely? And the amendment to the act, and you can see what I'm sharing right now, this comes from that's from Dykema Gasset, who, or from Dykema, it's not Dykasset anymore. Um who who put this out after the last amendment to the Open Meetings Act. Excuse me, um beginning January first, you can see where my cursor is, a twenty twenty-one. Um we could, public bodies meet electronically under, but only under certain circumstances. I'm sorry. Was either, um you could only attend remotely, sorry, electronically. If you um, if you were uh under military duty, serving military duty, you had a medical condition. Um or if there was a statewide or local state of emergency, uh state of disaster, something like that. Um the state's emergency order is gone, but Washtenaw County's is still in effect. At least the last, I looked this afternoon, it's still in effect through the end of this year. Um if we go to in-person meetings um we can still provide an electronic option for the public to participate. Um and they're under the same requirements or or not requirements as they are if they need in public. But when it comes to board members, it's either military duty or it is a medical condition in order to participate remotely. Um but that's But that starts. That technically starts legally starts after December 31st. If you go back to in person and you're not operating under an emergency order anymore. The person would have to have a medical condition or a, have to be serving in the military in order to participate remotely.
Okay, to, to, to kind of follow up on that though. For, for those items and I followed up a little bit with, with City Attorney Scott Monzel. We would be required to provide an opportunity for those under military service or with a. Medical issue that would require or that, that would prevent them from attending in person. So we, we would be required to provide a means for them to, to participate. But generally. If, if, if we're going that route and we do allow or and we, we do have people who are participating remotely. We do have to establish procedures to allow for that. And then they're under the same obligations that, that we've been operating under for the last, you know, year or so. That they have to announce their, their physical location. And then if it, if it's, you know, down to a couple of members who are participating remotely. We have to provide the means for residents to be able to contact those people. So that, so that they can provide feedback to the, to those members. Outside of the meeting.
I'll have a question.
All right, Paul.
So. Let's assume that we go into full participation by the council. On December 31st or after thereafter, okay? How can I be assured that? I can be safe in that spot? If. We do not know how many of those people in that room. Have had their COVID shots or vaccinations. Because as I understand the Delta. Virus has. A much more. Clivity for infection than the original one did. And so. Do I feel safe enough to walk into that room? Not knowing who is vaccinated or who is vaccinated. Of course, they can say so and they're not. Do they have to prove it? To somebody at the door? I'll start with that. Are we, are we, are we sure that I walk into a room? And I am fairly comfortable that everybody in that room is vaccinated?
We, we do have the ability to establish our own procedures. So I mean, it could be the case if, if it's the direction the council wanted to go, we could still say, you know, or set the expectation that folks are wearing masks. We set up the room so that people are sitting six feet apart. There are, there are, you know, the methods that we've, we've seen to be effective. In combating the virus that we could. Set the expectation that, that those will be in place. During meetings.
Would, do you want to come up with the list of protocol then and place that in the packet for discussion?
I can do that.
Or is that appropriate? I'm just trying to figure out where we go from here. I mean, I, I mean, this, this thing isn't even in the packet that we're looking at on screen. Is it?
I'm, I'm willing to wait. Great. I just wanted the answers. And it was when they announced it, I've been thinking about it. It's related to me and my wife and the family and everybody else. Okay, so. I know there are people that still do not feel they need to be vaccinated. But you'll find out more and more, particularly the professional organizations, the hospitals. The nursing associations, the doctors are all now saying that there's no excuse and a lot of hospitals are taking a very hard view. And if they don't, you're not vaccinated, you are unemployed by that group. And that's not just in the north, that's in the south and a number of other hospitals. Or conditions like that, so areas. So just trying to figure out, you know, before December 31st, which will come up very quickly. What we plan to do of the company, we reach that, reach that section.
Well, before that, it'll be September, Paul, we need to know by.
Yeah, well, right, you're right, Donna. Right, and that's a month away.
I appreciate what you're saying about you, you in particular, I come home and I'm not carrying any kind of disease to my family members. I live by myself. However, if I had somebody at home that was certainly fragile, medically fragile, and I were going out and coming back in, I appreciate what you're saying. And I think we need to consider that.
Right, but, but in September, Paul can attend virtually, right?
Uh, yeah, I can, I think, can he?
I'm asking Dustin or Michelle, is that the one? I can't read, I can't read what was up there.
So I don't know what's going on, sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove that share screen.
Thank you.
Um, so it, it's, it's my understanding and I'd want to, you know, continue conversation with, with the city attorney. But through December 31st, folks can meet.
Right.
Under the, the emergency declaration option. They can get, they can meet virtually due to the declaration of state.
So I'm anticipating in September that we're going to have some people in person and some people virtually. So now I, I know you have your hand up. So I mean, Justin, we're going to need to make provision so that, you know, if, if Paul wants to participate from, you know, where he is now at his home, that that can happen.
Right.
For three, for three months?
Well, for the, for the four months, September, October, November, December. Yep, yep. And then we gotta, we gotta work together to get. Whatever other rules clarified, Paul. I mean, if, if the variant continues to expand, you know, there might be new rules, there might be modifications to this. OMA, but they, they don't ever seem to do it until like two weeks before the deadline. That's just how the state operates. It, I would think we should talk about these questions with our representatives. Makes all the sense in the world to extend what, what we can do in September, you know, which is have some present physically and some virtually. Makes all the sense in the world, but. Sure, there are people that don't feel that way. So now, thanks for waiting patiently.
You're welcome. Thank you. I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Paul and Donna that, you know, with. At least in September, it seems that we have still the option of being both. Remote and in person, but in for after end of December. It would be nice to see what are the things that we can apply and having a list of those things to consider for, to make sure everybody is safe.
Okay, thank you. Wa.
Thanks, and I apologize if this was said when Michelle's screen was shared and we were looking at that other document. I was sort of reading it. If we're talking about having sort of a hybrid come September. I think we also need to make sure that that takes the citizen participation into account. So I don't know if that adds a different layer of. Technological facilitation, but I just don't want us to overlook that part of it if that's something that we can do.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to add a level of complexity to this, but I've, I've watched other communities do it already. You know, if we're all in person, we're all going to have to have our, our computers muted if we're having them in front of us. And then when somebody's called upon to talk, they're going to have to press the mute button and mute and unmute, that kind of thing. It gets a little bit procedural, but it can be done and. We're going to have to practice at it. Ryan, I will take a question from the public, sir?
Hi, everybody. Just, just a quick thing I wanted to add. In thinking through the way that the, the current setup is written, it's all about whether the, the board member has a, you know, a relevant medical issue. But maybe that could be expanded to the board member's household as a way to be more inclusive of the kinds of issues that we're talking about. And, and frankly, just the, you know, I don't think that this, that those original provisions were written with pervasive infectious disease in mind. So I think that seems like a good compromise. I just wanted to suggest.
A, a, actually, so the, the OMA, the Open Meetings Act amendment that was written by the state. Was, I think, very narrowly designed intentionally by the state legislature. Because at the time that it was amended, the state legislature was still very pro get people back to meeting in person as soon as possible. E, e, and, and this was done in the midst of the pandemic. So.
No, that's useful context, but, but I do think that that is one way to, to think about. The eligibility, because I can definitely see, you know, a world in which we have. Folks participating, you know, who themselves may not be immunocompromised, but, you know, children, partners. This is kind of the world we're, we're living in at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, so more to follow at the next meeting on that, Justin?
I'll come back with some, a concept for procedures. My, my, my only other question is. I guess I just want to make sure that, that council or that, that there are some, at least some members of council who. Are interested in being there in person. I know that, I know that we voted at the last meeting to move to in person starting in September, but. I guess the question is if, I just want to make sure that, that, that it's, that nobody's going to be in the, make, make sure that there are people going to be in the room. And make it, make it useful to, to actually do that. To have those procedures.
I plan to attend in person.
I plan to attend.
If I can, Dustin, unless I'm out of town for some reason.
I do.
I didn't hear you, Donna, please.
I do plan on attending.
Thank you.
I think at this time I would plan to be there in person.
I would say that for me would be a little bit of a transition with adjusting with the baby and, but. I would like to attend in person.
So there you go, Justin.
All right, thank you.
Yep, good question. Michelle, anything else for us?
Just one other thing, and this one is quick. The zoning ordinance update, you're, you're coming up upon. A time to have another joint meeting with the planning commission. You know that we've got the form-based code that we're finalizing as well as use districts. It's a lot to digest. And so in talking with Megan today, we are looking at either the 30th of August, which is the fifth Monday. Or, and that could be virtual or in September, but that will, that would be more in person. And I just would like some feedback from city council or I can put this, I can also follow up in an email with you. And I plan to do that with planning commission as well. But, excuse me, it would just be nice if I know whether you prefer in person or. If you'd prefer to have it as a, as a virtual.
Michelle, I think if it's between now and September 13th, it's virtual.
Okay.
Or September, whatever.
No, I get that, Sean. I just wasn't sure whether council would prefer to be, to have the joint meeting in person. Because if so, then I won't worry about August at all. We'll look at sometime in September setting the meeting.
I think it's more important to get going. Than to wait.
Okay.
Just, just one, one person here.
Who is this, a meeting between again? I missed this.
It would be between city council and planning commission to. To go over what's already, we've already done with the zoning ordinance.
I agree with Donna.
Yeah, I would think sooner.
Okay. All right, unless anybody has any objection, objection to that, then that's the way that staff will proceed. And that concludes, I don't have anything else unless you have a comment or question about the information that I haven't gone over that's in my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Wa.
All right, I just, I mean, I doesn't, just because I'm on both of those boards, I'm not available August 30th. So I don't, I don't have to be there if everyone else is fine with that. I just want to let everyone know right now I'm not available that day.
Thanks, Wa.
Thanks, Wa. Okay. Michelle, thank you for that. Covered a lot there. There's a written report from our county sheriff's department in the packet. Does anybody have any questions on the sheriff report? I'm on page 157 of the packet. Okay, seeing none. We'll move down to our city manager for.
All right, so I was able to slip a lot of my updates into, into other people's reports.
Good.
Yeah, but I do have two for you. The first is I was contacted by folks from the Dexter Days Committee and they just wanted to provide an update on a couple of. Pieces of the, the festival that they're looking to do. And I wanted to, to share these with council and see if there's any feedback that, that council has to give. The first is they're looking to do a train. Apparently it is a, like a single conductor, but it's motorized and it carries a couple of. Passenger cars for kids. And apparently in the past, they have done this in Mill Creek Park North and run it along the boardwalk. It was not included in their permit or it wasn't identified in their permit. But they're now looking to move forward with that. And before I gave any approval, I wanted to see if council had any, any thoughts.
It's a motorized train on the boardwalk.
Correct. Now, there, there are no tracks, but it's, it's basically a.
But they're going to run it.
A smaller version of, of like a four by four.
Yeah, like a multi, yep.
Yeah.
And where do they want to go with the train?
They, they want to go along the phase one boardwalk.
To, to where? To West Ridge, to the?
Up, up, up to West Ridge, back and then down towards the cemetery and then back. They would load and unload in, just behind 8140 in the, in the parking lot.
Would that close the boardwalk to pedestrians? Is it that wide?
So they, they've indicated that they've done this in prior years. I, I don't ever remember seeing it. But they've indicated that it, it is small enough that it allows pedestrians to, to pass.
Okay, if, if they've done it in prior years, I don't remember hearing a complaint about it myself. Anybody else have a concern? I mean, it.
I'm like, Justin, I don't ever remember seeing it.
Yeah, me either.
Yeah, they, they, they've indicated that, that they've done it in prior years. I, I, I don't ever remember seeing it, but I also. Looking for a train ride.
There might have been a train that went around from like. Central and Broad and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense.
I don't remember it on the boardwalk, Dustin, and, and I guess the only question I would have is because it's motorized, is it technically not supposed to be there?
Correct, yeah. So our, our trails are, are non-motorized.
Maybe we should ask them to pick another route, a route within town somewhere. Wa, and then Jamie?
Yeah, I would be more comfortable with another route, given that, number one, that the trails are non-motorized and number two, we've. Yeah, I would be more comfortable with another route, given that, number one, that the trails are non-motorized, and number two, we've already brought up the issue of cyclists on the boardwalk and the trail. And if we were to allow them to use the trail, I mean, I would not be comfortable with it unless we put up some sort of signage, letting the cyclist know there's going to be this train with kids in it.
From from what they've indicated, there has been signage in the past that says something to the effect of, you know, there's a train coming, please, you know, give way to the.
Hit the kids. Not that I'm anti cyclist. I just, if they're not ready for it, I mean, it's just, it's it's not usually there, so.
Jamie?
Yeah, I think my preference is for a different place, just given it's a non-motorized path and just create some sort of precedent, like come use your motorized vehicles on our non-motorized path. And that's what we're like, you know, something was specifically shut down, but we're not shutting it down just for this, so I would be moving it.
Well, Justin, I think there's your feedback.
Yep.
We're okay with the train, just not on the non-motorized path.
That sounds good. Something that might be new for this year is they're also looking to do some small putt-putt courses. And they're looking to use some different, some various grassy areas. The one that they pointed out is in front of Three Bird. And apparently that there's a company that will come in and set up a miniature putt-putt hole. And since since it was new to this year's festival, I wanted to to again solicit feedback from council before giving the okay to use, you know, for example, that that grassy area in front of Three Bird for for that purpose.
So do they have to put a hole in the grass?
It it sounds like they they don't have to dig a hole in the grass, just something that gets placed on top.
All right.
As long as they don't hit me in the shins with a golf club.
Is that road in that particular spot? Is that road closed?
Central Street is typically closed between Main and Fifth.
Could it go not go on grass then? If they're not going to dig a hole.
Well, it'd be very difficult to stop golf balls on concrete.
Well, that's a good point. Asphalt, yep.
Or asphalt, either one, so.
Thank you.
Makes better. Grass to that. I was concerned about, you know, repairing the grass, a lot of people walking around it, and then there's a hole here, and then you got to figure out.
Yep.
Grass can recover, and it's not like a permanent damage, but you put 18 holes in or even nine in along that area. It's not a big area. No, it's not a big area at all.
Wa.
You just said the area in front of Three Bird, right?
That was that was one, she said that there were three areas and she specifically noted the area in front of Three Bird as one of those.
Okay, because that's Main Street, not Central Street, and that's definitely oak. Right? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm missing something here. I just, again, I I am like the most, I I get anxious and worried about things I probably shouldn't worry about, like kids running for golf balls into Main Street. I probably not something that I necessarily need to be concerned about, but.
It sounded like like they wanted to use the white fence to enclose.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for making me anxious.
I mean.
Peace Park, Justin?
What was that?
Are they going to make use of Peace Park?
They did not. They did not point out Peace Park as as an area that they want to use.
I haven't told.
Go ahead.
I just said, you know, they said like in front of Three Bird, but does that, that doesn't tell me the other two that they are considering. If they would say that, then that would be a little easier to make that decision. I know there's not a lot of time, but now if you've identified one, why do you identify the other two?
Yeah, and Justin, there's a lot of room in Mill Creek Park. You know, where the yoga's done or the, I mean, if they need more room, but that what that tells me is that they don't have enough vendors to fill that area, because usually the area in front of Three Bird has booths and vendors.
Right. Yeah, and 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 this was a call that I received this afternoon. That's 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 the the cause of the lack of details on on that particular item.
Well, I don't think anybody has any objections to putt-putt necessarily. Why don't you figure out where the other locations are and get an email out, and then people can call you individually if they have a concern?
Okay, yeah, I just I just wanted to bring it up because it was it was new, and it wasn't included on the original permit. So then the the other upbeat that I have for you is 3515 Broad Street. So we did get the results of the phase two back. And the items that they were looking for, they didn't find. Specifically, the vinyl chloride right out in front of the building and the potential underground storage tank in the middle of the parking lot. They didn't find, they didn't find those items. But they did find what's called TCE along the border of the the western property boundary, which is closest to Alpha Metal. And then higher than permitted levels of arsenic and mercury just outside of the smaller building, what was formerly a coal storage shed. So these items are, those two things are a pretty good distance away from the building where they were where they were found through the soil borings. And the the issue is that they do still fall within the range of concern by Eagle that ASTI is basing its findings on. So it it will likely require some additional sampling. And what's been recommended is to do sub-slab sampling over the course of a year. But between six months and a year. And in in talking with the sellers, one option that that we've discussed and we've discussed it with with the city attorney as well is to have them potentially contribute towards the additional testing. And then put money into escrow in the event that something is found and we need to do remediation in 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 the building. Because those the items that were found were were a good distance away. ASTI did tell us that they appear to be low risk. But, you know, there's, there's always the potential that we do the subslabs investigation, the the sampling, and find something else that we we didn't expect and still have to have to do remediation. It feels a little like environmental whack-a-mole. But, you know, I I think, you know, the the big point coming out of the the phase two is that we didn't find the the two items that were of the biggest concern. But we do, that we do, are, we are still required to do additional sampling to to verify the safety. But those those items that we're testing for, ASTI indicated that they are likely low risk.
So the so the sellers agreed to cover the cost of the testing or help us with the testing?
Yeah, so well, so the I I talked with Jeff Evans today, and I talked with the the other Swiss representative last week. And they're they're in the process of presenting that concept to their clients. So we we haven't come to an agreement yet. But it seemed like like they would be open to to contributing towards the additional sampling and potentially putting money into escrow for remediation, if if any is required. And then if if not is required, then we then we give that escrow money back.
Okay, explain with Ken, Justin, the six months to a year.
Yeah.
Time period here.
Yeah, so the 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 idea is that we would essentially drill small holes in the basement in the in the slab. And then you stick a pipe in, cover it, and then you take air air quality samples. And you would do that once, at least once in the summer and at least once in the winter. It the the kind of golden standard that's set by Eagle says you want to do it once in all four seasons. ASTI has indicated that if if we're going to see something, then it's likely going to be in the winter. So whether or not we actually need all four samples is questionable. But that that's kind of the the golden standard. The the challenge is that the the sampling isn't cheap. It's, you know, potentially five to 7,000 per per seasonal sampling.
Okay, so you'll keep us updated on when you hear back from Jeff Evans or the representatives of the sellers?
I will.
And there's still no closing date set, right?
Correct. You know, the obviously the the sellers want to get to closing as as quickly as possible. But I I guess I want to get city councils feeling for for that concept of basically good good gold going to closing, doing the sub-slab sampling, and then having the sellers put money into escrow for remediation if it's necessary.
Seems fair to me.
I like that idea, too.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. That that was all I had for you.
Okay, thank you, Justin. I had a pretty short report in my packet, or as part of my contribution to the packet.
I have a question for Justin. I'm sorry, I don't mean.
Oh, go ahead, Wa.
And I think Jamie does, too, and she raised her hand first, so if she wants.
Then Jamie, and then Wa.
Yeah, fine. Thanks. So, Justin, on 2A for the Broad Street Truck Route request, is that, and maybe you'll get to it for that traffic control ordinance discussion. Is that what motivated the TCO, or that's just that's separate?
No, that will so that the the TCO has actually been, you know, kind of tabled for a little bit. It it's been in discussion for quite a while. But the once we have a TCO policy, then I think it could apply, or the the Broad Street request could apply to that that TCO policy.
Okay. And then the other question I have is for our organizational matters meeting. Our council rules document says we are supposed to be doing that within 60 days from a new council member joining, which per my calculation gives us to August 27th. I would like to meet that deadline. I just wanted to let people know that it's there if people are wanting to abide by that or not.
Yeah, and and I'm I'm planning to send out a doodle poll probably tomorrow with dates from August 2nd to August 13th.
Okay, thanks.
Jamie, if we can't get the a date set, then maybe we'll do it at 6 o'clock on the 9th and have our council meeting start at 7:00.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, longer term, I think that's why I would prefer meetings at 7:00, because I think that would help us get some of this stuff done in work sessions.
And and when we are a meeting in person, that's that's how we would do things pretty regularly. We'd have a work session prior to the 7:00 AM meeting. So there is precedent.
Wa, you have the floor. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, thanks. Justin, just one quick question, and I know we've we've been over this before, but I can't quite remember the steps. So for the second street, the residents meeting that you mentioned on the 12th, what's the process for those residents being notified about that meeting? Just somebody who I want to make sure he knows that it's happening because it's right outside his house.
Sure, so so there's going to be a letter going out. So we, for the Dexter Crossing meetings, we sent an initial letter out to basically everyone along the potential path of the roadwork. And since we added in Lexington Circle, we're sending out a second round of letters to the folks in Lexington Circle. And at the same time, we're generating a email update list to that we can collect those folks' email. So we can provide them with with regular updates as the project progresses.
Okay, I will make sure and give you this one individual's email because I know he doesn't always check the packets, but he's someone who's been in communication with me, asking questions about the project, so I just want to make sure he's informed.
Sure.
Sorry, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, no problem. No problem. Okay, any other questions for Justin? Okay, seeing none. Move down to my report, which was included in the packet. I don't have anything additional to add other than I just want to make sure everybody saw the note about the Silo Township meeting. We did have a good discussion for about an hour and a half or so. And they've agreed to incorporate some comments into the the master plan, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have another meeting, I believe, sometime in August before before they take official action on on anything, so. We'll keep you posted on that, but we, everything we talked about is stuff that this council provided input on before, related to either traffic or density or you know, uses that that type of thing, so. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, we have, what, four items on the consent agenda? Is that correct? Ms. Fisher?
I, yeah, I moved, approved the four items listed on the consent agenda. Bills and payroll in the amount of The contract extension with K and B Asphalt for crack seal services not to exceed 18,000. Contract extension with JV Contracting for pavement marking not to exceed 19,000, and the approval of the terminal server replacement for an amount not to not to exceed $6,618.50.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Fisher. Is there a second?
I second.
Goodbye, Sanam. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call a vote. I'm expecting one abstention.
Yes. Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Ezzins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ram?
Yes.
Shell?
I'm staying.
Eo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We are on to old business. Item K1 is consideration of a city manager contract, starting on page 185.
We have a motion on the floor, correct?
Yeah.
Motion, move it in second, and then we had a move to postpone after.
Yeah, let me go back to the minutes and just make sure I have that right.
Well, I want to make, yeah, I just want to make sure we do it right, too.
So I had a motion by Fisher, second by Sanam.
Okay.
Is that is that what everybody else has? Am I looking at that right? L1 from last meeting?
I just, yeah, I just want to, I'm looking at this procedurally if we're getting it. And so, yes, that's what I thought happened.
Justin, can you confirm that that's what we approved?
Yes, there was a motion made, and then there was a motion to postpone.
Yeah, so the motion, the motion to, the motion to approve was made by Fisher, supported by Sanam.
Correct.
Okay, so that is still on the floor. We have a revised contract amendment. Starts on page 186, is it? Are there, Ms. Griffin, I see your hands. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Does that motion then need to be like friendly friendly amended for to incorporate the revised contract presented here? Or or is it just general?
Well, it can be. I mean, that's that would that would be my preference is to refer to what's in the packet. Yes. Well, it can it can be. I mean, I that's that would that would be my preference is to refer to what's in the packet. Yes. Okay, Ms. Fisher and Sanam?
Yes, it's okay with me. Yeah.
Yes.
What you're doing is you're adding the pieces from the packet, is that correct?
Yeah, we're we're adding the reference to the six pages that are on page one eighty-six through one ninety-one of the packet.
Okay, so I make sure I know what I'm doing. Yep.
Yes, sounds good.
Okay, thank you both. Comments by council? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to call the vote.
Hey, Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Dozens?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eo?
Yes. Okay, uh, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, six to one there.
You all.
Yeah, congratulations, and I I'd just like to um thank Marie Sherry for all of the work that she did. Starting back in uh the end of last year to. Help us stay organized, at least with the process that we use. So Marie, thanks for your help on that. Um, old business item K two, discussion of conflict of interest ordinance. Dustin, you wanna? I think we have to, I think we have to figure out which one to to do a public notice on is where I'm.
That's right. That's um, that's. Pretty much the the summary coming out of out of the last meeting. Um, was decided by council, wanted to narrow it down to a single option. Um, to move forward to a public hearing. And um the 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 three options that were have been presented um over the last few months are. Included in the packet.
We don't have to set the public hearing tonight. We just have to kind of give some guidance on which one we think. Does everybody have a a feeling one way or the other on this? Uh, Jamie, your hands up. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I've obviously said a lot about this topic. My preference would be to get public input and input from the boards and commissions on the. The ordinance that I've worked on adapting from the city of Rochester, although I would say that it is not in its final form right now, just because I would need to incorporate edits. And I think there was still some discussion about um incorporating Mr. Rob's uh feedback and other general comments about the Board of Ethics. So I'm leaning in the direction of a. Uh, I don't know if you'd call it more nuanced. I don't know. I don't necessarily want to say more thorough, but. Something that um extends it into more of a ethics ordinance than just a. Then just the earlier version and get public input on that, as opposed to starting with something maybe narrower and then trying to to make something broader.
Okay, so you're proposing that we we go to our boards and commissions first and get their comments.
I guess that's what I was thinking the the process was. Um, but I I'd be fine either way. I just want to say I prefer I prefer this ordinance, and I'm happy to clean it up, and whoever it needs to go to first, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Juan?
Just want to point out that the other version already went to our boards and commissions long enough ago that I was chair of the board. So that was before Sanam was even chair. So I just dragging this out even further. I mean, I get that we want to get something that works and that everybody's comfortable with, but. At this point. We we've already done that, and the boards and commissions already said the first one was fine with them. So we've had all these people already say this. I I just, I'm struggling with the idea that. I hesitate to say this, but I'm struggling with the idea that one person is reinventing the wheel here, when we've already had all those people look at something, and they were fine with it. And I I just. I don't want to keep talking about this. I want to have the public look at something, which version of it, I don't really have a dog in that fight at this point. But I don't, I don't want to keep delaying this. I just want to get something on the books, so we can all know what we're the rules that we're playing by and stop living under this. Like cloud of am I violating or am I not violating by doing the normal things I do in my everyday life, which are not a conflict of interest, probably. But if I don't have something to look at and know and to go on, I'm I I it makes me uncomfortable. So I just want to work.
Thank you. Uh, Zach, and then Sanam?
Yep. First, I want to apologize. I think I was the one who was reading through the the charter a couple of years ago and said. And got the part that says we're supposed to have a conflict of interest ordinance and contacted staff and said, where's our conflict of interest ordinance? I'd like to read that. Um, so my apologies for that. Um, would I I think the the one from Rochester does a. Better job at managing those areas where we have normal relationships that aren't conflicts. Um, so I really like that element of it. I don't think um in substance, it's any tighter than what or stricter. Um, than the previous one that was viewed by the boards or committees. So I I would feel comfortable with us making the adjustments to that based on on our current one. And um, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Sanam?
Thank you. Um, I I want to clarify that my my comment was that, and I still believe in that, that the the one that was put together. That has gone to the boards and commissions um is um to me is a good one. If we, as the council, choose to add um a section about um having Board of Ethics. Um, that can be, to me, added to to the one that has already gone to the boards and commissions. And again, in that section, um, what I wanted to see or my suggestion was that it would be. Um, for the public, if anybody in the public wants to um bring um a concern to um. In in regards of the conflict of interest. Um, and not for the um council members to use that extra body if they have disagreements. And um they don't like the path that a decision has gone.
Okay. Thank you. I think I think procedurally where we are is that we wanted to give everybody one more chance to to read through these and and make any comments they wanted to make. But at the next meeting, we got to set a public hearing date. If if we're not going to go to boards and commissions. Sometimes we have to ma- make a motion to put one of these forward in the paper. So.
So you're wanting to wait till next week or next?
Well, yeah, because we we didn't, we didn't say we're going to set the public hearing. So on the on the ninth, what I'd like to do is, you know, we'll have all these right back there on the agenda. Or or Jamie, if you've got something you want cleaned up. Um, you know, please get that to Justin so that it could be cleaned up. But I think I think that on August ninth, we should set the public hearing date, which would then probably be uh September thirteenth, I would guess. Right? It's usually a month out, right, Justin?
Right.
It should be a good test for our first. In public semi-virtual meeting.
True, and and. Well, hopefully we'll get, you know, enough of the public out uh. Either by Zoom or in person, we'll see how how the uh split meeting works.
I'm sure there's a, there's an anticipation for the public just to come and hear us talk. So I assume we'll, I assume we'll have uh at least a hundred people there, okay?
I I I was actually thinking that when we um get the new building, we should invest in a popcorn machine.
There you go.
All right, so that's all you guys. Oops, and I'm sorry, see your hand up again.
I'm sorry, I just want to see if like anybody else has any thoughts about that um that section. Because if I'm the only one thinking about, you know, having that Board of Ethics section possibly. And again, that would be something the council to think about even. Um. Then, and if everybody else is like, oh, we should just do with the one that was presented at front of the boards and commissions. Um, maybe we should just go with that. I don't have a strong feeling um. One way or not.
Well, Sanam, I'll 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 try to answer your question as best I can. I I've I've been in the camp of. Less is more with this, meaning the simpler the better. I was um, I liked the early version. Um, but I'm I'm not against a more expanded version that goes with the ethics. Uh, angle. But I'm anxious to hear what what the public has to say about it. I've not had anybody talk to me about that. On this, and and I, you know, I mean, I want to get to the public hearing, and we. We've taken a lot of time to get to the public hearing. So I think that's that 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 for me is the most important step. I'm anxious to see if anybody says anything about it. One way or the other.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Donna?
I'd like to know if we've tossed around a ton of ideas, and really, the reason we're doing this isn't for ourselves, it's for our community. I'd like to know what people have to say. So I'm happy to expose them to the idea.
Thank you. Okay, so on the on the August ninth agenda, there's going to be a action item, consideration item to set a public hearing. Um, I assume I'll see all kinds of hands popping up there, ready to make a motion to.
That.
To publish. Okay, we're down to new business, page four of the agenda. Uh, new business item L one is discussion of the Second Street Water Main and Sidewalk Project Update. Dustin, I'll turn this over to you.
Yeah, so um, uh, a few months ago, we cast OHM with um coming up with a preliminary design for. Um, the Second Street Water Main and Sidewalk location uh for a spring project. Um, Patrick Dros is here from OHM to uh give a short presentation. Um, I believe that uh you have um the PowerPoint presentation in your uh packet, starting on page uh two twenty-eight. Um, and uh I will turn it over to Patrick to uh give an introduction.
Thank you, Justin, and good evening, council. Um, I'm going to share my screen if that's okay, Justin.
Let me allow that. Hold on one second.
Okay. As Justin mentioned, it will follow the PowerPoint, but um sometimes I. Like to use a little laser pointer tool.
All right, you should be able to, Patrick.
Can anyone see that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, as a, as Justin had mentioned, um, we're here tonight to give an overview of the Second Street project. Um, the 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 main point while we're here um is that we've advanced this project to the point where uh it's appropriate. And uh in part of our plan to get feedback from the residents um along corridor. Um, so what we'll do tonight is uh first provide that level of update to council uh to get your feedback. Uh, and to give you an idea what we'll be going to the residents with um in August uh as part of a a public meeting. To really kind of uh get on the ground and talk about individual property owners and how those are going to be affected by uh the project. So. Um, I'll I'll be brief, but generally speaking, we give you an update um of the project. But we'll start with a summary of when we last talked about this back in February. Um, a kind of a detailed discussion of what the phase one scope is, and then a schedule. Um, that takes us through design into construction. Uh, so just a reminder, um, we're talking about Second Street, running from approximately Dexter Mill uh all the way down to Inverness Street here. So um the scope of work will be a little different block to block, but generally speaking, um, we're looking, you know, at at this particular corridor. For improvements. And so, again, just a a summary about why Second Street was identified. So um. A few years ago, we completed a a water asset management plan that looked at the water system. And uh in working with Dan and his team. Um, as we pulled records together, um, realized that that main, we had known it, it was old, but it was an old main that was starting to experience breaks. Um, so the time was right to start to look at what would it take to replace that water main. And around that time as well, um, lead and copper rule changes came into play. Um, so it really became an elevated importance uh to get that main upgraded. Um, the street itself was in fairly good shape. Um, we had done a, what we call a cap of that pro- of that road back in two thousand and fourteen as part of. Um, the rather significant asphalt uh asphalt program we did um within that portion of the city, village, it was a city at that time. Um. Uh, so the road itself is in fairly good shape. We'd actually done a sidewalk in two thousand and thirteen uh as well between the block of uh Hudson to Inverness. Uh, but the water main we knew was was going to be something that was need to be dealt with at some point. That said, because the road wasn't quite ready yet, um, we wanted to really strategize this project to design where the sidewalk would go, where the water main would go. But then also plan for the future of some later improvement to make sure that what we put in um next year was not going to be compromised as part of later projects. Uh, we learned some things from working on President Grant Street, um, where some of the decisions um made about where a water main went. Um, didn't necessarily look at what that next phase of the road improvement might be. But generally speaking, um, we we advanced on that design philosophy and then came back to council with a couple of questions about the roadway. What would be included, what wouldn't be. Uh, but generally speaking, the takeaway is at the time where we're going to keep it to a two twelve-foot lane uh roadway. Uh, we'd like to do curb and gutter at some point on that. Uh, definitely wanted sidewalk on the west and east side of it with an offset from that curb. Uh, we didn't want to push it uh too far away. Um, on-street parking was not uh deemed necessary along the length of it. Although there were a few uh uses that still had that, and we wanted to maintain that. And so we took that and we've entered into design um with those in mind, but really focusing in terms of what the actual project would be. Look at water main and sidewalk on the west side. And when I say west side, uh, we're talking kind of this section here. Well, in terms of the phase one scope, and this is what we will be going to construction uh with in in the spring of twenty twenty-two. From Central to Dover Street, um, we're really just talking about sidewalk improvements. The water main was installed uh within the last twenty or so years. Uh, so it doesn't need any attention at this time. Sidewalk will also impact some driveways, so we'll do some approach work as part of that. Go over to Hudson, this is where we get in some of the older water mains. So we're going to do a full replacement of the water main. Sidewalk will be replaced on the west side again, driver approaches, and then, but then there are some areas where we're doing some storm sewer and ditch enclosures. Um, based on where um the grades are 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 working in those areas. And then looking from Hudson to Inverness, uh, again, water main replacement, drive approaches, and then some localized storm sewer work. Again, that sidewalk was installed from Hudson to Inverness in two thousand and thirteen. Well, again, we're setting the table. The way that this project's being designed is that we're going to basically set the the water main, set the sidewalk at elevations. They're going to allow us to construct the road uh with curb and gutter at a later date. So there's uh will be on the interim uh ditches put back. Um, and as necessary, we'll enclose those in in spots where we believe it will be too steep. Um, so there will be some enclosure work done as part of this phase, uh, but we're basically putting everything in a location where if that road is reconstructed at some time in the future. We can basically just pick up where we left off with this project. In terms of the phase one project, and again, this is talking about putting in the sidewalk and the water main. Uh, there will be an impact to uh trees along that uh west side of the road. Um, because of the offset we've selected, um, it will impact approximately twenty-five or so smaller caliber trees. Um, and it's unfortunately due to the prox- Um, and it's unfortunately due to the proximity of the road. And, and there are some larger trees that are set further back in some areas. Um, so trying to maintain a consistent offset from the road edge. Um, some of the trees, uh, will be impacted as part of that. And total properties will be getting new sidewalk and then sixteen total properties will see new water main. Uh, and then water services will also get replaced as part of this project. Um, working with, with, uh, Dan, um, we will also be doing investigations over the next few months, um, to determine if there are uh, lead service lines or galvanized service lines for water system. And we'll also be looking at sewer lines to determine if there's any issues with those. Um, again, this will be the time to do that, get the underground out of the way. So that when the road project happens at some later date, uh, we can really, really kind of just focus on the road portion at that time. We did mention that there's going to be some drainage improvements. Um, and we'll have to do strategic ditch enclosures in some areas where we get a little too steep. We want to make sure that what we put back are, are mobile and traversable slopes. And basically looking at where the grades fall as part of that, we will be able to tell where those are going to be an issue. This is just an overview showing, uh, what the section looks like again. Basically sidewalk offset from the back of curb future. Um, and then you can see that obviously now, uh, drive approach is being replaced, uh, to the sidewalk in most areas throughout. Again, our, our water main work will be, uh, generally starting at Dover, Edison, through Hudson, and then all the way down to Inverness and over at the portion of the intersection. We're going to be focusing our work again on this right side. This is a kind of a potential future build out of what that might look like. And we'll really be just kind of focusing in this area here, getting sidewalk in and our water main will sit underneath that in most locations.
Patrick, real quick, um, on the, on two slides prior, um, showing the property boundaries. Um, can you talk a little bit about, um, the challenges with, um, the sidewalk in relation to, um, where those, those property boundaries fall and, how close the houses are to, to the street?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, you know, if you were to review our, our standards, um, and really those are, are written largely for new construction. It typically recommends that you put your sidewalk about one foot off the right of it. And, um, what we found in this area, just because the original village slash city was platted with ninety-nine foot right of way. That really starts to get that sidewalk very close to people's houses. And although it's not, um, their property per se, um, it's maintained that right of ways is very wide. Uh, so it effectively kind of becomes part of their front lawn. And so, that coupled with the fact that there are a lot of insignificant trees in these areas, um, basically push it to kind of go with this more consistent uh, and uniform offset off the right of way. It's close to the street. It's a, it, it, um, allows us to, uh, keep it uniform. Kind of the yard in, in front of most people's home. And, uh, it also, um, it's offset just enough where we have that room to manage any, we end up, uh, plowing off the edge. So we're not putting that onto a sidewalk. Justin, does that cover your question? Is there anything else on?
Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Great. Patrick, I have a question for you.
Sure.
If you could stay on that slide. So you're going to do just driveways on the west side, right?
Correct. Yep. Great, great point. So this is, this is kind of a future condition and as is the roadway itself. Really, what we're just talking about is this sidewalk here. Uh, and, and, and then this, you know, there will be the water main work as well. So this is kind of what a future condition would look like. And obviously that could actually, that could change a little bit. But, but not significantly. We really kind of went with that twelve foot section with, with the, uh, with the curb and gutter, uh, in the future condition. You know, it's basically set up for that. So, um, and again, that goes back to our February meeting where we kind of ran through some of these actions.
My point is most of the job is on the west side of the road, right? This first phase.
Yep, absolutely.
So, so you'll only, you'll just repair stuff as you cross with services to the east side, but the west side water main and the west side driver, like that big drive approach right there. Just north of Hudson is not going in at this phase, right?
Yes, that, that is correct. So that's, that's currently a gravel driveway area. We're making that way. Um, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Zach, I see your hands up.
Yep. I'm, I'm going to repeat some of the comments I made last time. Um, again, my background, architecture and urban planning, which I understand is very different from engineering standards. I would not support this ultimate design at this time for a couple of reasons. I mentioned before twelve foot wide lanes. That's the same width as roads on I ninety-four. I'm on Washtenaw County GIS right now. That's the same width of lanes that you're driving eighty miles an hour on. That's the same width of lanes as Jackson's. And it is contrary to our intent of making it more, more friendly for pedestrians and other transportation options. When you design a large road, people feel comfortable going fast. There aren't enough crossings. I'm looking there. If I'm going to Dover, I have to walk an entire block. Or actually more blocks. I either have to go back to Central or all the way down to, what's the other street? To Hudson, I think, in order to have a crosswalk. And I know these aren't all part of this, actually, yep. Um, which is a long way, which encourages people who go into the park to, um, to just walk in the middle of the street, which again is, is not consistent with our goal of, uh, encouraging pedestrian and other transportation modes. The turning radiuses, uh, I, my understanding is we don't allow through truck traffic on Dover, Edison, Hudson, Hudson or Inverness. But those right of way are designed for large trucks. I understand we need to get, uh, fire trucks through there, but, um, usually they have big flashing lights and people will get out of the way. Having larger turn raises makes it less comfortable for the pedestrian because it encourages drivers to pull all the way up. Um, because it's already starting to turn. It encourages people to drive faster because they don't have to slow down as much. Um, I understand the need for curbing in areas where there's issues with water control. Um, but I feel it will significantly change the nature of this area. Um, and I would prefer to see flat curving, not multiple curves, but flat curves that will hold the asphalt in and continue the, the consistent nature of it. So I would not support this design. That's it. Thank you.
Zach, what lane width do you think is appropriate for second street?
I, I would go to eleven. I understand there are trucks out there. Um, so you don't want to go too small, but, um, the, the literature, the research is for every extra width, extra foot of width lane, people will drive three to five miles per hour faster. So we've induced them to go six to ten miles naturally faster on that road section with the design.
I, I, I think still, um, again, the way that we have the offset with the sidewalk, um, that would certainly accommodate a narrower lane width if we needed to. Relative to the radii, it's, it's really just more of a question of, you know, the operations of the street. Um, certainly, uh, we're familiar with the NACTO standards, um, that allow us to go narrower. And that's something that, you know, again, this design could accommodate in the future. And it's really just more of a decision about, you know, if there's, if there's an issue relative to speed and that, that, uh, or, um, the need for, uh, prioritizing pedestrian movements over vehicles. Um, that's ob- obviously something that we can look at as part of, you know, phase two or, or the, you know, the next design phase of this. But certain, certainly, you know, certainly things to be talking about. I know speed is one of the things that we are going to get some data on. Just to get an understanding of how fast people are driving. And we obviously are designing it to, uh, the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Currently, but there are things that you can do, um, to help make those speeds lower for sure. Narrowing, calming, other measures. They, they do work.
So Jamie, I see your hand. Let me just ask one follow-up to Zach's comment on eleven. What is the width of the existing roadway now, Patrick?
You know, it's, there's really kind of no actual defined shoulders out there. If I'm recalling, I think they are, it's a twenty-two foot wide section right now.
So, so in, in, in theory, if we kept it at eleven, it would be the same, approximately the same width as we functionally use it now. And if you're going to add the two foot concrete curb and gutter, you're going to gain a little extra width anyway.
And we have done eleven foot lanes before. Um, Central Street, for instance, and then has eleven footers, but those are also adjacent to bike lanes, uh, so it doesn't necessarily have that narrow feel to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm measuring it now. It's between twenty and twenty-two feet depending on which section.
Okay. Thank you for that. Jamie, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. That was kind of my follow-up question. If we knew of others, streets in the city, if there was some other standard width we've used in other streets in that general vicinity. Uh, so it sounds like central streets is, is eleven feet. Um, do we have twelve feet, twelve foot wide lanes in other parts of the downtown area or?
Yeah, the lane around the downtown, downtown and main street, I think is twelve foot lanes. Um, it's kind of hard to measure because you have the angle parking a lot of spots. Baker Road is twelve footers.
Okay. Would it, would Dexter and Arbor also be twelve?
Yes, I believe that is as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick, thanks for letting us interrupt you with a few comments.
No problem.
Paul has his hand up.
Oh, go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
Was there, has there been any discussion by anybody, uh, including us, I guess, that recognizes that there is a park uh, that we have that has no public access as theoretically. Uh, has no access, uh, by sidewalk. And the street is non-existent, uh, as far as curb and gutter or any, uh, asphalt or anything there. So, if we're working in the area, is there any desire to have that situation corrected? Or is that just a park that's, uh, uh, like the, uh, the second or third or fifth child that gets left behind?
So, I guess relative to Edison Street, our plans right now are to, um, improve drainage at that location. So we are going across the street, um, to bring a, uh, an improved stormwater outlet. Had that as part of the, the construction project, um, relative to Edison Street itself. That, that's been something that the city has looked at, um, often on it at certain points. Um, we've looked at it. Um, as development has come in, looking, you know, most recently we had the, uh, the storage, uh, use that was proposed at the, their site. There was a time probably five or six years ago and we looked at it as well. Um, we looked at it as part of, um, you know, funding applications. Um, so it's, it certainly has been part of this design process to know that that, um, at some point could become something that, um, we wanted to accommodate. Again, this design, um, would allow it. Um, certainly it's, it's just a matter of, uh, there needs to be some improvements on Edison itself. Before we can really put that, you know, into these drawings.
Does a, does improvements have to be, on the street be done, designed before a sidewalk could be put in? Preferable or doesn't make much difference? You have to say it's some, someday, somehow, some way. So if you did it now, at least we would have access to a public park that has nothing, no access to it at all.
So my thought is, is if, if a sidewalk did go in at Edison, uh, maybe a crosswalk at that location. When the road gets reconstructed, that likely would be some throwaway work. It would be, you know, maybe thirty or forty feet of concrete that would probably have to get torn out, um, just by nature of the construction. But, you know, be beyond that, call it fifty foot swath of second street. The work could likely remain as, as is. So if you were to do some work on Edison, um, you know, once you get further north, I don't think it would be impacted by future road project.
Product cost for the throwaway?
Um, give me a second. I mean, it's, it's probably in order of five to ten thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Donna, thank you for waiting.
Um, yeah. Um, I don't think, um, that, I think more, more recently, um, Parks Commission has taken quite a extensive look at that park, and I think it's on our radar now in terms of the, our park system. So I'm not so concerned about us treating it like a stepchild. I think I think that that may been, have been more true in the past than it is currently, but I think we have an active, uh, a good solid Parks Commission that does follow that. I could be wrong and I'm going to defer to Justin because he sits through all those meetings, but, um, are they not aware, Justin, of what goes on?
So, um, actually it's, it's funny that, that, you know, this comes up for, for conversation because at the last Parks Recreation Commission meeting last week, Jamie, it was last week, um,
Yeah.
Parks and Rec actually spent, um, a good amount of time, uh, talking about, uh, First Street Park.
Good.
Um, and there was, there was a point where, um, the commission was actively looking at it. And had made a recommendation to city council. And, you know, there, there were, there were, you know, a set of improvements. And, well, first we had applied for a grant, which we didn't end up getting. Then Parks, uh, recommended the use of those grant match funds to, to make a, uh, kind of a broader swath of improvements, um, to that park. Um, which council at that time, um, declined. And then Parks came back with it with a follow-up recommendation to do kind of a, a, a smaller set of improvements. Which, uh, RDPW has kind of been slowly picking away at as, as they've, they've had time rather than kind of taking it as, as one big project. So it, First Street is, is definitely still on their radar. And I think that, um, the commission, I think would be interested to know if, if, um, council would like to make it a, 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 a bigger priority than it has been in the last couple of years.
Okay.
So Patrick, my question would be, and I think this goes back to Zach's. In, in the ultimate vision for that corridor, are we planning to have a crosswalk of some type at Edison to get across the street? And, and if so, could we just do, and I don't know how drainage works there. Uh, I haven't studied it that well to know, but I could, could you just, could you just do the intersection improvements? Enough to facilitate a safe crossing into the, the Edison right of way there. Cause you know, that doesn't even look like it's lined up with Edison, the way it's drawn.
Yeah.
Which I would have some concern with.
Yeah. The, the way it is right now, um, there's fairly significant offset between this existing gravel area adjacent to a dare and Edison itself. Um, it's not centered in the right of way to Austin significantly. I guess to, to your question about, um, intersections, what we've basically shown right now in the concept is, is doing crossings where they currently exist, but I think the, uh, the master plan, um, that city has completed for, you know, looking at things like that motorized. You know, basically what says the sidewalk at all these locations. So, um, I would, you know, suggest that what you see in Central where there's a crossing in every quadrant would be the, the long-term vision for this corridor.
Yes.
To your point, um, Zach, you, you shouldn't, if you need to get some across the street here, um, you shouldn't have to walk all the way down to the, you know, to Hudson Street to cross. Ideally, there's a crossing in each one of these intersections, um, each side, uh, in, in truth. So, I, I think it could be added at Edison for sure. I think we would, um, we would deem to do a little bit of a study about Edison. In, in kind of the unimproved section about. In, in kind of the unimproved section about where does that, uh, roadway want to live? One of the things that we looked at in 2016, I want to say. We looked at doing a parking area over in this area here. And there's some overhead DTE lines that they kind of start to push you off center a little bit. Um, and then looking at, you know, at that time, there was, you know, there's still parking over in this area. How does that work? Especially if you're bringing in large semi trucks that need to basically turn around. That would be something that, you know, if that is an improvement that wants to be added to this project, um, just to probably dust that off and, you know, bring it, bring it back to this group to talk about. What are some of the options and how do we want to improve it?
I, i- i- is, is the thought that, that those improvements would be, would be made as part of the current project or the project, the future project that would see the road improvements?
Well, my suggestion, Justin, was, you know, we, we could do, if, if it works, you could do the intersection improvements and get that intersection set up and have the beginning of the sidewalk on the east side and everything. And then you'd have a crosswalk designated. I mean, it wouldn't be that much more work. I don't know. I mean, even if you had to put the curb then to show kind of where it was going to be, it would be fine.
Well, the, the, the design that we've advanced also does vertical for, for, um, Second Street. So we know where that road wants to be. Um, so we could actually, in, in that particular area, we show it. Looking at my profile right now, we actually show that intersection coming down ever so slightly. So, we would likely need to rebuild this, you know, this particular, oops, excuse me, this intersection here. We've done that before. We put the curb and gutter, just the intersections. Uh, and then when we end up re, reconstructing, we just kind of taper into that existing, uh, as we come into it. So, I think all options are on the table. And, and because we're doing stormwater work already at this intersection, we're going to have some of that dug up already. Um, so if that becomes something that's of interest, I think the project can accommodate it. Honestly, this particular location fairly easy.
Uh, Dan, I see your hand is up.
I know it wouldn't be a very good option, but what about just putting, uh, the, the markings across that road to get them on the other side? Coming off the existing sidewalk that we're already putting there right now. It doesn't really give them a sidewalk down to the park, but it gives them a designated place off of the existing sidewalk. I know that's not the, the perfect option, but.
Well, I, I think, I'm not sure, Justin, what, what the end goal of this discussion is. In terms of what you want us to conclude with, because we're not taking action on anything. So we're, I think council is expressing an interest to better define the crosswalk at Edison somehow. And if it could be done as part of the, the first phase project, I think there's enough interest there based upon this discussion to warrant having an OHM. Look at that. And if that means build out that intersection, fine. If it's less than that, fine, but let's start the thought process. So we start paying attention to getting people across the street safely there.
That sounds good. Um, yeah, the, you know, like you said, that this wasn't intended to be a, uh, consideration item. Um, but, uh, we wanted to bring the information that we had back to council before, um, holding resident meetings. So that way, you know, if, if council gets questions or has feedback, prior to that meeting, then we can, we can start to incorporate that.
One of the, I shouldn't say flaw, but the quirks about it is that if we're only taking the survey of the people who live there, uh, it doesn't allow, uh, knowledge that we're doing something there for the rest of the residents to get to another park. Some don't even know that park exists. But if we start to define it by putting a, a sidewalk there and eventually a street there, where they know it is, can drive back to it, then there's, you're going to have more activity there. If they decide that they don't want to do that, uh, then, then that's, that should be decided as well. It's, it's going to be once, as I said, the stepchild park. And I, I hope that Donna is correct and that Parks Commission is looking at to improve it. So it can be additional park area, uh, for the city. It's, 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 it's got a pretty decent piece of land there that we could use.
Just added this, this is from our plans. Um, so we're already planning to take out fair amount of this particular intersection. Um, this is Edison right here to do a new storm line across. So it's not going to be too much more of a lift than we already kind of planned. So if there's a, a vision and we get feedback from residents that this is something that we want to include. Just put this up here to, to show you that we're already headed in that direction. Um, so it's not going to be a significant cost increase.
I know there are a number of people that have dogs that, that walk in the park and then they walk out of the park and uh, they can either go up through Hudson or they can go, uh, up through Edison there. And, uh, I see a lot of them come up through Edison when I'm there, have been. And, uh, they, they like the, 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 uh, seclusion of the park and that it's not have a lot of activity there, but it still provides some of the things that they feel they need to and have. And uh, I know the horse shires are still using it, not as much as they used to because of the COVID issue. But they did, uh, did previously up to that. Uh, and had that as one of their main spaces, uh, from warm weather, cool weather to uh, cool weather again in the summer. And they also, I had that number of tournaments. I believe there was five of them there. They had every year, including the big one at Dexter Days, which brought in like 130 people or 40 people every year. So.
Okay. Patrick, are there any other elements of the project you'd like us to talk about or think about?
Not in specific. Definitely appreciate everybody's feedback. You know, as, as we go forward, I'll wrap up with the, just an overview of our schedule just so everybody uh, knows when this is coming. Again, we're talking about phase one, which is the sidewalk in the water main. We're basically going to be wrapping up, um, after we go out and talk with our residents, um, in a few weeks. Um, we will go out to bid and try to basically do kind of a very early winter bid. Uh, we find that we get pretty good prices in that, in a January timeframe. Um, that, that's the point in time when typically the, the prices for commodities are set for the year. Um, so the contractors aren't, um, quite on edge about, you know, where the prices are going. So if we kind of hit that January timeframe, uh, lock in some decent prices, get some good competitive bids. And then we get underway with construction, um, spring and early summer 2022. Again, that phase two can happen. You know, we envision it's probably something that's five years out. Just looking at the roadway condition, it's in pretty good shape. Again, repaved in 2014. So, um, that's generally, um, just the presentation. Just wanted to give everybody an update on what we're at. Um, and, um, as, as mentioned, uh, we will be, uh, out, uh, with the public uh, in a few weeks, getting people's feedback. We're going to do the same way, same way we did for Dexter Crossing, kind of an open house. Um, come talk to us. And then what we're going to do after that is, uh, we're going to set it up. So if people want to have one-on-ones, we'll have sign up sheets and, and, uh, members from VPW Utilities and, and, uh, instead of you know, OHM, uh, we'll come out and meet one-to-one, talk to people, what's going to happen in their yard, uh, get feedback, uh, to inform the final design.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, Ms. Fisher?
I just have a quick one. Do you find that very many people want to have these one-on-ones or are most people satisfied by having the, um, the mass meeting?
So, uh, and Dan, certainly you can, uh, chime in as well, but I think, um, it depends on the project. Um, when we're just repaving your, a street and basically putting back what's there. Um, there might be, you know, instances where it's worth talking about, you know, a certain issue. Um, but when we're actually talking about, I mean, certainly taking out trees. And, and ditching and that type of thing. I think the one-on-one is a really good way to really kind of talk about where is this project going to go? I think we had some pretty good feedback on Grand Street when we did that. You know, meeting with individual residents. It, it's a good way to really help, help the, the public to understand what's being proposed. You know, the, this, something like this is helpful for some, but some people may not necessarily understand. Um, you know, what the various line types on pages mean. So getting out and, and, you know, pacing it off in the field and saying this tree's going to stay and this one, yeah, we got to take this one out. We find it's pretty helpful.
Okay, just, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate your time this evening and your good work. I'm going to move on to new business item L2, a discussion of, uh, traffic control order policy. Justin, back to you.
Sorry, just to change you back the, uh, the sheer settings. Yeah. So, um, we talked about this a, a little bit earlier. We had developed a, a draft of a TCO policy. Um, I want to say in 2019, um, something like that. Um, at, at a time when we're getting a, a substantial number of, um, traffic control requests, including um, stop signs, um, uh, no parking on one side of the street signs. And so we, we've, we've gotten to a point where, um, we think that, uh, you know, it, it makes sense to, to look at for implementation, um, to really kind of walk through a, a, a process that everybody understands or, or that everybody can, can understand. For how the city will go about considering, um, those types of requests. You know, stop signs. You know, we, we talked about it at, I believe it was last meeting. No parking signs, uh, you know, within a certain distance from, from a particular alley. The request that was included in my report about, um, removing the, um, designation, the, the truck route designation from Third and Broad. I think, I think having, having a, a procedure in place for, for officially considering those items makes sense. And then ultimately having them come, come to council for confirmation and, and, uh, implementation approval. I think meets with, with, um, engineering standards that are in place.
Justin, I, I, um, appreciate the work put into this. I think my, my biggest comment is in the first part. I don't, I don't think we should have a traffic order policy that starts off with the city does not have a current adopted policy. I, I think, um, I think you need to rework that to state why we should have a policy, not that we don't have one. Cause when this gets adopted, you know, you're not going to want to read that, right?
Sure.
Uh, Zach?
Yep. Uh, I'm going to point out on page 243, and this is just a, a nitpicky approval process stuff. The way I read it, um, the process is outlined there that anyone can come in and say they want a traffic control order processed. Uh, Joe Schmo down the street, the guy who's cranky with the city. And the city manager, if you follow the, the tree there, goes through the process and submits that to the engineer. Um, I, I would recommend some sort of a tweak that if it doesn't come from staff, that council needs to approve it. Otherwise, if it just gets, anything that gets submitted goes through the engineer could be, um, a nice way to generate billables, um, in a spite manner. And so I, I'd like to put that circuit breaker in there.
Okay.
But again, to clarify, if it's staff that, that says, hey, we need to do this thing here, then just go do it.
Donna will remember that.
I was just going to say that. I got my sign from A.J. Hale. Right?
On Hudson Street, Hudson Street and Forest.
Yeah, and then.
He lived down there and he didn't like the traffic. So he just came in and made a motion and.
Well, there wasn't an order for the one on the other end of the street either.
Oh, you're right.
Which people just kind of run it nowadays, but I agree that we need a policy, some kind of a procedure that we can count on.
Okay, well, if other, if, if there's other comments on this as you read it or reread it, get your comments to Justin. Justin, I assume we'll see, we'll see a new version of this next meeting then.
That'll be the plan.
Okay, great. Uh, new business item L3. Consideration of the proposal from Partners in Architecture for Architectural slash Engineering Services for 3515 Broad Street.
I move approval of the proposal starting in page 246 with not to exceed $60,000.
Thank you. Motion by Michelle's. Is there a second?
Go ahead, whoever it was.
Griffin, Jamie.
Go ahead, Jamie.
So a motion by Michelle, second by Griffin. Thank you both. Justin, anything you want to share or any discussion questions by council?
Um, I, you know, I think, um, the proposal outlines itself, um, fairly well. The idea is that we would, um, pull together the, um, review committee, um, for, for the design. Work, work through that process, um, come back to council with, with a final design. Partners in Architecture will assist with, um, working through our, our internal processes for, um, building inspection and review. And then ultimately help us with, um, developing a bid document that we can put out, uh, to general contractors. Once a general contractor is selected, Partners in Architecture will, um, provide, uh, inspection oversight, um, to the general contractor.
Hi, I'm in a meeting.
Okay, council questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Jones, if you're still there, please call the vote to approve the, uh, proposal from Partners in Architecture.
Yes, I will. A rab.
You can go ahead, Carol.
Okay. I didn't hear an answer. A rab?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Eo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We are down to council comments. I'll start with our two student reps today. Uh, Aaron, would you like to go first?
Uh, yeah. Um, I guess just, I enjoyed the meeting and I'm excited for the rest of the year.
I barely heard you. You said you enjoyed the meeting?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I'll speak up. Yeah, I just said I enjoyed the meeting and, um, yeah. So.
Good.
Taking my time to get used to the council, I guess. Kind of trying to figure out what's going on.
No problem. Thank you.
We've been doing, some of us have been doing that for 20 years.
Alex?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining for the meeting. Uh, Mr. Cousins?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Wah?
Uh, yeah, um, just a couple of things. First, I want to clarify something I said earlier, just because, and I hate that I have, feel like I have to do this. Maybe that feeling is a personal problem, but I said earlier that some, I've made some comment about the conflicts of interest in things that I do in my everyday life. Let me clarify why that, those words even came out of my mouth before anybody can misinterpret them and think that I'm doing things that I shouldn't be doing. Some of these conversations I feel have taken a tone that have made me feel like if, you know, if somebody loans me $5, that's my. if, you know, if somebody loans me $5, that's my friend, that's, you know, a constituent, do I have a conflict of interest? Or if my boss is prospecting a client in the industrial park that is not, that I'm not supposed to disclose what he's doing, wha- what do I do then? You know, I'm, I feel like I'm, it, I just, I feel like my back is against the wall and it, it's making me very uncomfortable. And I just want to put that out there. With that said, there were some comments at the last meeting that Zach made in council comments about how, you know, trusting government is that, you know, a low we haven't seen in a long time and yet it's trickling down from the state or the federal and the state level to the local governments. And I've been thinking about those comments a lot in the last two weeks, not because I necessarily disagree with them, but because they just don't sit right with me because of all the times that we have all said that this city is a big family, a community, we take care of each other. And I just, those things don't match up to me. And I mean, I know we're not private citizens anymore when we're elected to council. We have rules to abide by, black and white rules, some of them. And, you know, we, we are expected to be held to a higher standard, but we're still neighbors and friends and community members, and this is not a large city. And I've said things like this before, and I'm going to continue to say them because that's just who I am. But I challenge us to take that sense of being held to a higher standard and extend it to acting with humanity as we make decisions on this council. And I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Awah. Zach?
Um, first of all, for, for those of you who don't know me so much, the reason why I was so passionate about the roads is that's in my wheelhouse and background. And there's a common understanding that we shape our environment and then our environment shapes us. And these types of designs are important. They're going to be there for 50 to 70 years. So it's, it's really long-term thing that's, that's difficult to undo. So if anyone's curious why the heck I'm so passionate about curb radius and lane width, that's why. Let's see, I, as I mentioned earlier, my phone decided to take a poop last week. So if anyone has been trying to contact me one way or the other, I haven't been ignoring you or being a jerk, or I may have been being a jerk, but not because I wasn't answering you. I'm almost there. It's been quite a challenge. No one wanted to take my money to give a phone. It'll, it'll be a fun story someday. So, and also if you call me, I don't have any of your contacts because like I said, my previous phone took a dump and they weren't able to transfer anything. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to start by saying congrats to Justin. I look forward to continuing to work with you in your new role. And I think if there, you know, concerns about the conflict of interest ordinance, I think would best be answered by reviewing the specific ordinance and testing various scenarios against either ordinance. And that's how I would personally select among our options is, is thinking through those either real or hypothetical scenarios and finding the one that you think best fits. So I look forward to seeing what we come up with next, next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Sonam?
Just to say congratulations, Justin. Looking forward to working with you. That's it.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, Justin, I'm going to look forward to working with you as well. And I want us all, every time we leave this meeting and every time we walk into a meeting, to keep in mind that we never bickered like this in a majority of our years spent together. We're not these kinds of times where we didn't trust one another and so on. We need to work on that, in my opinion. We need to work on it on the way out of the meeting and on the way into the meeting. That's all.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, I think I've got everybody. So we're back around to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will seek a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Move by Fisher?
I second.
Second by, who was that?
Sonam.
Sonam, great, great. All those in favor?
I
Have a good week, everybody. Last week of July, August will be here before we know it.
Good night, everybody. Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.